And I am calling to order the Board of Supervisors joint budget meeting with the Republican County School Board and Board Supervisors February 8, 2022. At this point, if everyone At this point, I am just very thankful that we can all be in this building together and look forward to the future when we are facing the PC. And I want to thank Dr. Grimsley and the School Board and Dr. Walton for making sure that we have the communication available. We have Supervisor Witten joining us electronically. Not sure that Supervisor Fraser was able to make the meeting seem hot. Are there leaders? If everyone will please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation, a republic, in which there is no law.
Please pause for a moment at the side, please. Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda? Mr. Grove, is there a second? Is there a second from his bio? Any comment? Hold it, David Ryan. All right. I am close enough. It's ordered.
Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda for the Board of Supervisors? Ms. Smith, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Carney, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye. We need to confirm that Mr. Witten can hear us. If he's having some difficulty.
Can you hear us okay? Mr. Wood? Can you hear us okay? You're unmuted.
I think you have not unmuted.
Alright, you're unmuted.
We had this problem last night.
Is the
He was the speaker.
No, he's unmuted. We might talk to him until we're connected.
Is the chat window available where he could send some text?
I'm showing you not muted, but it doesn't sound
What about you? Did you see that unmuted at the bottom of the screen? Is that you?
Oh, yeah.
Can you talk to him?
Mr. Witten, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you now.
We had that problem.
I voted aye.
Thank you, Mr. Witten.
Thank you.
Right. We're ready to move on to the student representative. Kevin?
Alright, Ms. Camden.
Kevin, you're free to take your mask off when you're talking to us. We can hear you better if you wish. Is that you?
Hello, good evening. I'm Jenny James. I am the student representative of Rappahannock High School. And I was selected by Mr. Stewart, who's our principal. And tonight, as we need to discuss future investments in education, I want to say on behalf of all students, we appreciate you. Really thank you. In the past months of being in my position, I have had the opportunity to meet with and talk to a lot of students. We have, and to tell you the truth, we have a good thing going on in this, in high school. Okay, our student school events coming up, our Jump Start Initiative began in January. This program is the first in its kind where VCA advisor, leader of the student, is working with a cohort of twenty-four, twenty-four eleventh grader seniors now to get a head start on the college application process. Our FFA chapter will be celebrating FFA Week with a spirit week from February twenty-second to February twenty, February twenty-fifth. This week will include farmers breakfast, breakfast for our communities of the farmers. We are looking forward to Ag Club Day on February sixteenth. On February seventeenth, our eighth grade students will participate in Reality Store, in case you were wondering who that was. The Reality Store is a financial simulation that allows students to learn more about career planning, money management, budgeting, and decision-making. Students go through the process of choosing their career, pursuing their paycheck, and learning to vote what they're paying to meet completely expenses, a lot of unexpected expenses. The eighth grade academy is planning, is planning their overnight trip. Eighth graders and upper year mentors will be enjoying a team building overnight experience at the boarding center on March second through the third. At the end of the ninth weeks, which is March eighteenth, will be celebrated with another Renaissance Day. Students who are members of the No Zero Club will be treated to a day of fun while teaching to get a World Service certificate. There are three opportunities for high school students to learn, I'm sorry, to earn money this summer through some programs, which include to recruit their day camp, Pathways Academy, and Fun in the Days. But the Sunday camp, Jenny Capson is cool. Listening to these programs. Seniors are working with a pop team profile of a graduate team on the headwaters and local scholarships every Tuesday. Spolions are due at the end of the month. And one would like to say, I am proud to have this position to be able to share all the happiness in our school, like in our high school. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Kevin. Do you have any questions? Kevin? Hey, I want you to know, made aware, each one of you has a white box on your, in front of your table. And inside that box is this, and this is Kevin's art. That's Kevin's artwork. Thank you very much, Kevin. I'm very happy.
You too. Thank you. Thanks. Glad, and as Kevin mentioned, this is, this month is School Board Appreciation Month, and that's why you have the beautiful gifts in front of you. We do appreciate our school board. This is from the students and schools. And of course, we included the people from Board of Supervisors in that too.
And we got these letters that the students made appreciation letters. You know, I would rather get one of these than ten of these. This is a very cold document to receive compared to this. So that's amazing students.
We have to meet the audience.
Alright, I guess we're ready to move on?
Alright, the next item on the agenda is the Agriculture Academy update. This has been a, an area of interest to both boards and the community, so we thought we'd bring our Ag Academy Coordinator, Michelle Pincham, to talk about that. And she's brought some books with her. I'll give her the introduction. You have to hold it up and make sure you're speaking really loud and clearly. That was, you have to get a little bit
You might have to
Rejection.
You might have to take a rest.
Oh, I know.
I can hear you. See?
Alright, well, good evening, Board of Supervisors and School Board members. Thank you for allowing us to present to you tonight. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Michelle Pincham. I am the Agriculture Academy Coordinator, Instructor, and FFA Advisor. With that said, first and foremost, I would like to introduce you to our second FFA advisor, Mr. Rich Hogan, who I have the utmost respect for and feel very blessed and privileged to work beside him every day. Our teaching strategies are very much the same. Many of his students are my students and vice versa, and we do work very well together. With that said, you may ask why we needed to have a second advisor? And that is due to our growth of our FFA chapter. And I apologize if I'm talking really fast, but they may be on time restraint, so I can tell them years about this. But we have grown from eight members to eighty-four members, and I just counted them this morning, and that is huge. Mind you, we started this chapter and smacked out in the middle of that pandemic in the fall of 2020. And the amount of growth we've had in just that short amount of time has been astronomical. So we're very proud of that, and that is why I brought some of my FFA officers with me tonight, so you can see them in the flesh, in their official dress, and they are also going to be speaking. With that said, I'm going to get back to Mr. Hogan in just a second. He's also going to speak tonight. But I wanted to talk about the veterinary science courses that we rolled out this school year. Veterinary one was last semester, Veterinary two is this semester, and these are my pride and joy courses. I love to teach it. It's what I've done most of my life, and it is a lot of fun. I have great students. And we are very blessed and privileged to have an extremely supported veterinary clinic right across the street from us, and that would be Rose Hill Veterinary Clinic. And having that support from the veterinarians there, especially Dr. Massey, has been huge. And I would not be able to do what I do in the classroom without his support and without being able to take them over there. Because I can teach them all day long, the logistics in my classroom, I can teach them from a book, from a presentation, I can do hands-on labs with them. But it's not the same as actually getting them into a veterinary atmosphere. I cannot let them see euthanasia in my classroom. I can't let them see surgery or how to run anesthesia or how anesthesia is run. I can't let them hear the sounds or smell the smells, because there's a lot of smells in veterinary clinics. They're not going to see the blood. They're not going to see the organs. I'm probably going to put it more in this. But they need to see that, and it's really important, because sometimes when they do see that, it's not the field for them. Luckily, not on wood. How old then have stayed standing? They haven't passed out. And the last visit we had over there, we were lucky enough to watch a dental that moved into a tumor removal. And that tumor is sitting in my classroom and is named Bubert. Yes, they brought it back. So being able to take them over there, the questions that they asked me when we returned to the classroom, they're really making that connection between the real world, between that pathway, that career field, and what they're learning in the classroom. So that tells me that they're, I'm teaching them like I should be. We're moving along. I did receive. And I just, I love those classes, so I'm super excited about that. Last but, last but not least, I think I'm doing good on time. I just wanted to say that we have an amazing administration at both schools, but especially the high school, because I went there. And I see them every day, and without their support, we definitely couldn't make this Ag Academy what it is, because they're flexible with us. I have taken so many ideas, as well as my officer, Mr. Stewart, who is here in our audience, and he always tries to make that happen. I could say his praises all day long. I just adore that man. And if he, if he leaves, I just, I have to put that on screen. But he's great. He's been a blessing to our school community and our school as a whole and to our FFA chapter, because he's extremely passionate about FFA and what it brings to the school. So thank you, Mr. Stewart, and thank you, Dr. Massey, and you watching us back there. And all for Mr. Hogan.
Well, Mr. Mills knows, like, usually come here with some positive news. This is some, this is some positive stuff going on here. I've been involved, I've been teaching for sixteen years and been involved in extracurricular or curriculars here at the high school and at the middle school for eighteen years. Never have I seen an activity that I'm more excited about than this right here. This is, this is diversity of students, all ages, and talents, and one strong thing, I saw right away with Ms. Pincham, she puts it along, those leaders right there doing it. And that's what's hopefully been a good, good characters for the future. So we, the planning of her program and my program, it's, I like said, I have a well-being, small engine repair. We now have a turf management plan, something type of, and ag mechanics, we're going to do competitions with. So we bring a lot of these, these young men from my class and young ladies, and we blend it together, and it's a good, it's a good, a great match.
And we are also having veterinary science team. I'm proud to mention that. Alright, Ms. Olivia. Alright.
You can have your question.
Okay, I don't know if you want that. Alright, my name's Olivia Gibson. I've been her president for two years now. This will be my second term. And that is also since we've had an FFA here. We've had one a lot of years ago, but recently. And my stepdad, Dr. Massey, told me that Michelle Pincham is going to be teaching at our school, and that she wants to start an FFA. Since that moment, I knew I wanted to be president. I knew I wanted to be involved as much as I could, compete in everything. So far, we've only competed in poultry judging, but, which was online due to the pandemic, but that was a blast. We had a lot of fun with that. And this year, I'm hoping to be on the veterinary science team and hoping to compete in public speaking as well. And I've also gotten into Virginia Tech and animal and poultry science, and I'm hoping to use a lot of what I learned in Ms. Pincham's classes in that. And I'm hoping to either be veterinarian or pet meat or something there. I don't really know. Something definitely of agriculture involved, though. And I've always known I loved agriculture, but her classes have really opened it even more to me. Before, I was just in cattle and horses and didn't really know much about it, just kind of thought they were cool. But since taking her classes, I've just fell in love with the whole industry. And the leadership about it is something I did not know would really happen, sorry, at first, but then, like, the second, we kind of got it up and going, it got put on to us a lot more. And I've definitely been gotten better at speaking, which I know I'm not great, but I'm better. And I've gotten better at being able to lead other people as well, because before, I've always been, I'm not really one of the, look at them, tell them, hey, do this, do that. But with their help, like, we're all able to kind of lead with each other. So we've worked really well together, and I love our officer team and our members to death, and I do anything for them, and I know they do the same with me. I also got to apply to a bunch of FFA scholarships, which is amazing. There are probably over a hundred and fifty that I was eligible for. And so that was amazing. I have not remastered them yet, but I'm excited, because each of them were about one thousand, five thousand each. So hoping I get one or two of those. That was very exciting. And I got to apply to even more Virginia Tech scholarships because of it, because a lot of their scholarships for the animal and poultry science are based on FFA. It's been very helpful for not only high schools and colleges as well so far. Thank you, guys.
Hi, my name's Isabella Nighting. I've been her secretary since this chapter started, and I love it. I love Ms. Pincham. I love this program. I'm so happy that she's here with us. And I love Olivia. I'm glad she's our president. I honestly, when they told us that we were going to have a chapter, I'm like, when are we going to be her president? I've known these kids since I was in eighth grade, and they're more like my family than they're my friends. And through Ms. Pincham's courses, I've learned that I want to actually go into genetics, be a biologist, or be a large hand, but thanks to Dr. Massey. And yeah, like we said about our poultry judging, we play sixteen in the region with less than fifteen hours of practice. And we went against teams that would practice in the courts. And although with the pandemic, it was a lot of cutting ends, because we couldn't actually live judge them, you had to do it through computer, and it just wasn't the best, but we did really well. There was some communication errors there too, but we did really well. And I love Toby, Toby from San Yol. He's, he's pretty cool too. I wanted to make that a statement, I just want to say, since everybody thinks it's meatball program, I, I'd probably tend to, I was kind of Yeah, we do, actually. There's a lot of people who think that FFA is just farming. And I'm like, no, it's the agriculture scene. Like, you can go to an agriculture scene, you're like, Ms. Pincham, or whatever you want to be, it's not just farming. I literally had somebody say, it's an FFA, literally today, it's an FFA, we're just farmers in America. Why would I do that for a living? Like, it's not just farming. They're like, but I love animals. I'm like, then you should join. Who cares if you don't want to go into that field? You join, you get fun experiences, like state convention, national convention, which we need to attend, but it was really fun. I don't want to join those meetings. They were really, really cool. I'm hoping that should
Good evening. My name's John Cody Clark, and when this chapter started, I came as a member, and then this past year, I became second, after a lot of persuasion from the media. And I'm, I'm here to tell you all, it's, it's one of the best decisions I've made in my life. So those know me, they know I, you know, I recently had a loss of my grandfather. I was very close to him, and it was not soon after that, they had, you know, the reelection with the office, they convinced me. And it was really good for me. He taught me a lot about, you know, leadership and, you know, taught me in the way. And, you know, the agriculture science classes, they give, they give places for kids like me, you know, that aren't super book smart, so to speak. They have a lot of, you know, it's, it's almost ager smart, if that's a word. But, I mean, they, you know, really, it helps us feel like we fit in more, just, it's, it's really helping, and it helped a lot of kids. And I've got a number to show it, because we started, like, we started out with eight members, but now I think we're up to seven, so I'm Eighty-five. But
That's why we love our principal right there.
That's a key button. But as, as you were saying, you know, it's really, it's really not so much about just farming. And my grandfather, he was in that FFA, and when he was there, you know, it was kind of like farming, and it's kind of like, it's changed with the times, it's a little better. But it's more about, more, not more about, but dealing with veterinary and genetics and different fields that a lot of people can have a gateway to get into. And it's just, it's a really great program, and I'm very thankful that we have it.
And Cody, you said, you said second.
Yes, sir.
I don't know what that means.
So I
Do you expect to know what that is?
Yes, sir. So I kind of make, I help keep the meeting room in order. We have meetings, and I make sure everybody's welcome, you know, go around, talk with people and stuff, just kind of like meditate. That's how, like Olivia was saying, I know I'm not the greatest speaker, but I got a lot better. If you would have seen me two years ago, I'd sit here from letting my feet
There's no way that I was perhaps, like, didn't know, like, you just did, just kind of meet. Right. It's a very hard commitment to be up there and supporting.
Yes, sir. I, I record every day.
Oh, you can meet the microphone? Okay, actually, Dr. Grimsley, if you could go to, I think, the second to last photo. That's our fishing. Everything fishing does. These are community service events that we've done, and all of this is uploaded, so everybody can see it. But I wanted to, oh, I guess I made a large slideshow. They like pictures. I'm not sure everybody has pictures. Do you know, I go there, go from Just fixed up, right here. So this, I should have made, maybe done the other one when I took Mr. Stewart's office, but we presented him with this amazing emblem that Mr. Hogan and his students made in his dwelling shop, and I just think it is phenomenal. I had nothing to do with it. I was just the idea that maybe they can do that, and Mr. Hogan, they ran with it. And some of you actually helped create that, didn't you? This picture does not do it justice. The intricate detail and just the arrows and the owl and everything is amazing. So if ever you do come to the high school, stop by Mr. Stewart's office, he'll be happy to show you that emblem, because we're pretty proud of it. Other than that, that is our presentation. Yes, it's on. Oh, sorry. We, I forgot to talk about St. Louis Day about this. This has been my baby since I got such a proposed idea. We're having our first farmer breakfast, appreciation breakfast, and we're inviting about sixty farmers from around the county to have a breakfast just for them, just to appreciate them. Show them all the thanks we can for what they do, because they don't only make up our, like, help, our county to help everybody. If you're wearing clothes, eating food, got to thank the farmer. So we're super excited about that.
Great. I thought I'll take the farmer. Is he invited?
It just went to the breakfast.
What?
It is.
It is Thursday, February twenty-fourth. From eight to nine, from Tom to Terry.
You can make
Limitations just went out, so sorry. And of course, all of you were invited. Having homemade sausage, gravy, biscuits, cake, bacon. I think that's it. Yes. They call. Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Have to say, there must have to be a message, Jack, so any work
Yes, we're very, very proud of the Ag Academy, because there's so many different students of all different walks, and they're designing their initiative ways. So it's been a huge hit in just a couple of years, as you've heard, the growth and enrollment and the demand. So that's what, those are the types of things we like to support. They get very creative, but we're designing a budget, because the need is there, the student interest drive it, and ultimately, the, the community-centric idea of that academy in the labor market and where our kids are going. So that's been a huge hit and a model that we want to expand upon as we can afford.
If I meant
Sure.
A lot of that goes to say that you wouldn't have the enthusiasm if you didn't have somebody like you, which is a good job. Try to try. For sure.
Absolutely, and we've said that before, and in models like that, we've tried before, just to kick off a little bit of Ag in Rappahannock. How could we not have such a strong Ag program? Well, it takes a very versatile person and someone who has multiple endorsements, understands teaching, and all those pieces that are so critically important to integrate it, curriculum development, and we found that person in Michelle Pincham. She is incredible. So we are very blessed. And if you're leaving, I'm leaving. We're all leaving.
It's all a hint, it's all a hint to Stewart. Carlos, it's all a hint to you. You're the new key guy.
Yeah.
Everything's hand to your
Alright, so speaking of the budget, the next item on the agenda, the budget building blocks presentation. We do this every year, just to kind of show the components of building a budget. So of course, the county school's budget is always based in our vision and mission. And then our foundation are really derived from our goals and our comprehensive plan. These goals have been previous goals, however, we are going Um, these goals have been previous goals, however, we are, um, going to update that. It's in the process of being updated now. Sorry about that screen up there. Why is that? Um, thank you, Mr. Curry. Teamwork. Uh, so the comprehensive plan is in the process of being revised, and the new comprehensive plan will be, um, ready for the public in May per final adoption by June, by the school board for the following year. Key considerations that we're looking at, so fiscal year twenty-three, staff increases. The governor's budget, um, does have a five percent SOQ increase both years of the biennial. And of course, we're always looking at enrollment and A D M, our average days membership. Retaining and recruiting talented staff, which is integral to student achievement and success. Maintaining the entirety of our effective programs, capital improvement needs, and any new state mandates that we have to comply with. Uh, we surveyed our community. Uh, this is the breakdown of the respondents by group, uh, with parents being the largest responding group. Um, and these are the priorities of the top ten. Um, so continuing to be in the top three are always teacher and staff salaries, uh, teacher and staff benefits. But, um, small class sizes came up to number two. Um, and I think people have seen the benefits of that, especially with COVID, as we have tried to make class sizes smaller. Utilize some of our federal funding to address unfinished learning. Um, and of course, ameliorate the spread of, mitigate the spread of COVID. Um, so career and tech, that went from spot number ten all the way up to number four. I have to believe that has something to do with the Ag Academy and health science academy, um, but very proud to see that. Field trips made the list in the top five. So I think people are missing the field trips because they haven't been able to go on it. Other than short, uh, trips that are part of the curriculum that are necessary for curriculum, so we haven't been able to do field trips. Um, so I think people are really seeing the benefit of those and missing them. And I know I've heard from a lot of parents who miss Shaker and those as well. Uh, so the governor's budget, uh, this is Governor Northland's proposed budget. When the re-benchmarking went through, uh, Rapid Honic, surprise, surprise, went to a twenty-eight local composite index. And we will go into a whole lot of that during the SIF presentation, so we'll get into that too much more. Um, but that budget, uh, projected a revenue difference of plus one point two million, almost one point three million. Uh, with one million seventy-seven thousand being earmarked for school construction and modernization. So that's the only thing that money can be worth it. So there's a large infusion in that line. Um, and unspent school construction funds in that line because it's almost impossible to try to get all those projects done in one year, especially when you have such limited time. So the idea there is language in that to, to make sure that that can be carried over year to year, um, for unfinished projects. Um, so standards of quality positions, um, we will get into this in the, um, a little bit in the SIF presentation. But basically, having a local composite, composite index of point eight means eighty percent of the expenses to fund the standards of quality falls upon the locality and less than twenty percent comes from the state. Now, when you look at the standards of quality, uh, funding formula even closer, you can see like this chart. Even though they say you must have an elementary principal, the SOQ will fund point nine five of that principal. So that point five has to come from somewhere else. Um, kindergarten ages, kindergarten teachers, two point one eight. So, uh, I don't mean two point one eight, I mean this many. So the, the rest of it falls on the locality. Now, the support positions are really interesting because those are subject to what's also called a support cap. So support positions, the state says you must have these support positions to meet your SOQs. However, we're only going to fund a portion of those as well. So not only do you get hit with the L C I, then you get hit with the support cap, um, idea too. So that's created this dilemma over the years, and there is a lot of advocacy right now through the Virginia Association of School Superintendents to try to change this. Um, but basically, since twenty-ten, we've, uh, Rapid Honic has lost about seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars. If, uh, the state had used prevailing costs for those positions in the SOQ formula. And subject to the support cap, that's how much, um, the gap is. So a lot of advocacy there. Um, how do we staff our schools? I get that question quite a bit. Um, we have a criteria we have to use, and we have a worksheet that we plug in, our enrollment per grade level. Um, how many required staff are required based on SOQ, based on your criteria? Twelve, like pre-K, one point eight eight. Okay, how about point eight eight? So of course, that runs up. Um, and then we figure out how we're looking as far as the SOQ for positions. So for instruction, this is this year's staffing. We do have some additional staff that we added with ESSR funding to address unfinished learning, such as transition teachers between K and one, one and two. Um, and then some other support staff. Same with the high school. There's criteria used for that. And then you plug that in, you kind of see how, um, how, well, you meet criteria. Are you over, are you under? Our staffing is pretty even keeled. We're not too far over. A little bit over, um, in teaching staff, whereas where we should be because we're addressing unfinished learning this year. Um, and we will be for probably the next three or four, five, I don't know. Hopefully not that long, but a few years. Central office staffing this school year. We have ten full-time equivalent, um, staff superintendent, assistant superintendent, our CFO, finance assistant, school board clerk. Uh, we have two executive directors, one wellness specialist in nutrition, uh, transportation supervisor, HR spend secretary, a receptionist, and digital communications, and two, uh, two point oh full-time equivalent art and grant funds, so not looking for funding. Uh, so cost projections. So what does it cost to give a five percent increase? It will cost the district with the additional staff, and once you take out, uh, the staff, it will come down, uh, more when we cover it with ESSR funding. With a plan to transition those out for nutrition. But five hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. How much does the state give us toward that increase that they're compelling school districts to do? Fifty-seven thousand dollars. So that's why this is really difficult to maintain your competitive edge with surrounding districts. We're going to get a whole lot more compensation supplement to meet that. Um, we are plugging in an eight percent insurance increase. We don't know what that is yet. We're using that as a placeholder. Um, we haven't had an increase in, um, health insurance in six, six years. I think this is the sixth year. Um, and in the last two years, uh, actually a bit of decrease. Uh, so it may be time, unfortunately, um, and we are anticipating that we will have some type of an insurance premium maker. V R S rates will remain stable. Uh, so last year, you remember, we had this conversation about, uh, compensation and competing with surrounding districts. So there was a lot of work done for scale compression on the teacher scale and some updating. Uh, so we did that work. So this is where we are, um, in terms of where other districts are. Uh, but I did rank it too, so you'll get to see. Uh, so in first year bachelor's, Rapid Honic is up four ranks. For a fifteen-year mid-level bachelor's teacher, we're up three ranks. So we're fourth with our surrounding districts, so that's great. Whereas we were, uh, used to kind of being dead last in all these categories. Um, same rank with the thirty-year veteran. And then master's degree, we went up six ranks of that first year because that's where we're really targeting, uh, trying to recruit, uh, talented staff. Fifteen-year up two ranks, and with our thirty-year, the master's range to, uh, make the scale work, it did come down a little bit. But, um, we're right there and much more competitive with our neighbors right now. So with that ten percent over two years, um, of the increase that other districts are doing, we are worried about losing ground because we're finally in a good position to recruit. Um, preschool funding, and you remember a couple of years ago, we did all that work for the First Step Collaboration. Uh, we are still collaborating, uh, just not in the same way. Um, C C L C is still part of the mixed delivery, now through a more regional group, which is wonderful. That means I don't have to do all the reporting, so that's really good. Uh, but they're, they're doing a great job and still connecting with us on B P I funding. So our B P I slots, our Virginia preschool initiative, um, has expanded, so we get more funding for those slots. We also get additional funds for our three-year pilot, um, three for three-year-olds. Um, and that's in connection with our public-private partnership with C C L C. Uh, we receive some public provider add-on funds to cover any gap costs. Um, childcare assistance, the C C A through D S S, because we increased two because of those students we had on the children who've had on wait lists, who are now in the system. And then now through our Rockingham partnership, that's how mixed delivery and P T G, preschool development grants are working. So so much to deal with that, though, never would have if we didn't create that collaboration. So thrilled to keep that going. Um, here's our enrollment and A D M numbers. So hopefully, we're starting to stabilize a little bit more in A D M. Um, I have a feeling we'll come back up as soon as COVID is behind us. Um, but so far, um, not, not too bad. Uh, here's the county contribution table with the total transfers, um, and transfers net at that service. Uh, so as you can see, we're at pretty, uh, stable rates, asking, uh, like for this year, the same local transfer came, uh, pretty even to what was transferred in twenty thirteen. Uh, so we haven't increased too much, even though costs have gone up. And I know that question came up, um, last year. Mr. Curry did a great job of actually, um, considering the impact, high value of money with the C P I. So we put together that chart to show, um, that local poor people expenditures have remained relatively low. But that lands on. All right, so that's the school budget drivers. So, Mr. Curry.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Grimsley. Say, note, uh, note say enough or forcefully enough, the effort that you've put in France and then call them. Great work you've done with that. All those marginal dollars are not coming from tech barrier pockets. It's really impressive. Forward's perspective, so thank you very much. Uh, I think last year I said it is the very preliminary point in time for, uh, me to make any really major statements about the budget. But I did want to at least provide a few bold points for the board to consider and for the public. Any members of the public who attended, maybe were watching the rankings recently, well, that our sales tax and our goods and lodging tax revenue has been increasing significantly over the last several years. And, uh, that is very helpful to the community in that any revenue that we receive through sales tax and goods and lodging tax, which, uh, much of it is coming to us from people who enjoy our community and the whole. Uh, those dollars are not paid, be collected from the real estate taxes, which are property taxes. And those are the folks that live here and stay here every day, so we like to borrow money from the folks in the community. It's about fine. I am expecting that an increase in our health insurance, we don't have those numbers yet, just like Dr. Grimsley. I believe that will be approximately eight percent increase. And I have one calculation on the dollar amount, not as much as what it is for schools, because we have far fewer employees. Um, our V R S rate in, uh, then should be out soon. And I believe those will go down over that ours, if you remember, ours went up a couple of years ago, they're fixed in particular periods. And I believe we'll drop down, that'll be a little safer, so lucky, that will offset the health insurance. We'll see where that goes. As Dr. Grimsley noted, the big issue is the pay, uh, situation. The General Assembly is, uh, very, very graciously providing five percent rates for school employees, constitutional officers and employees, sheriff's office, et cetera, uh, social services. And just like with the schools, when they provide that funding, it's really just a fraction of the overall funding that it takes. And, uh, with the county side, where you have many members, say, at the sheriff's office, some are funded by the comp board with the state, which a fraction of their salary is covered, and some aren't. If you can't give the rates, only some's now. Uh, so you end up giving it to everybody, and just like the schools. We're grateful for the funding that we get from the state, we just wish we could improve the people. So that will definitely be a big budget driver for us going into this year to bear how we can keep up with all of our neighboring communities who are in the same situation that we. Um, those of us, those of us who have owned property in the county, uh, have just gone through a reassessment process. Uh, that reassessment process did include costs in the current year budget and last year's budget. They were carried by recurring, supported by recurring revenue. That was about seventy thousand dollars a year. It won't need to be spent in F I twenty-three, so those dollars can be put to some other purpose. So that's something. Um, there will be an equalized tax rate. So you saw your reassessment value probably went up. Uh, they went up all different values, but the tax rate will be reduced to a rate that brings in approximately the same revenues as would have happened without it. So that number will be released shortly, uh, and it'll be a fair amount less than the current rate that we have right now. Uh, personal property assessed values have increased, and we're seeing that across the country. Anybody who's going to try to purchase a used car have found that the cost of cars, used cars is much higher. Uh, so that means the assessed value of those cars is much higher. So the board will need to consider how to manage that situation relative to taxing, um, and will raise some options to avoid that. A D M S program that has been in place, uh, over the last couple of years. And, uh, full implementation this year with a county fire rescue department for the chase vehicle. That is going to need some adjustments to meet the market availability of staff. We've advertised for staff. We've not been able to attract enough staff to provide twenty-four seven coverage. So something's gonna have to shift. Offer higher rates or look at other, uh, standard mechanisms, like full-time. Those are some of the things we're going to look at, if we want to provide twenty-four seven for adjacent. The board has been talking about your buildings and, uh, maintenance. And so there's been a discussion in recent meetings to expand your H E O capital maintenance funding if you can. So looking at all the other, uh, factors, we're looking, can we build an increase into that one? It's going for recurring dollars towards those capabilities. Um, as has been the point with last several years, like a couple of years, uh, the schools are not needing any capital support from the county. That's fantastic. State is stepping up there between the ESSR funding and the dedicated, uh, capital funding. And then this new potential capital funding from the eight dollars. Uh, you can get a lot of things done here in the schools that, that we're not gonna have to cover directly here locally. Uh, then lastly, as I did, uh, the major capital issues in the county, the lack of any funding from fund mills. Of course, the board knows it's in a very good position right there. Uh, you have a good savings account, rainy day fund. And, uh, it'll help me get through from today to a point in time when you decide to seek debt service grants or bigger funding. Uh, which you've got several million dollars that you can work for sure. And that's all I have prepared for today, other than just reminding everybody of the budget schedule.
Got any questions for us?
Me, but we, I guess, these questions could come during five dot one.
Sure.
Before college too. Um, but our goal is, if there is any concerns that supervisors might have this year, it's a good time for us to begin research.
The SIF presentation is next.
Good, so, um, so this is gonna be, uh, multi, multiple people taking part in presenting this and, uh, not first. About a year ago, uh, in this very room, uh, Supervisor Christine Smith said it would be good for us to have a task force looking into innovative funding, uh, related to schools. And that spawned our administrator and superintendent getting together, uh, to talk, to talk about how to achieve that. And, and what ended up happening is a meeting happened with the two of them, and they recruited Chairman Dottie and myself to that meeting. At that meeting, uh, we had, uh, I think that by the time we got to that meeting, we had already come up with a name, because everything has to have a name, right? And that's where SIF came from. And, uh, at that very first meeting, uh, we began to think about how to approach, uh, the task force challenge. And, uh, so we broke the problem down initially at the three, uh, tasks, uh, and we created Panther Teams.
And we created Panther Teams. Panther Team idea was the idea of let's create a team focused on one unique charter. And that people would know if they volunteered for this team, it would have a fixed scope and a duration. Right? So anytime you volunteer for something, your greatest fear is when is that going to be over? Internity, that's typically the answer. But our goal was to make sure that we measured things well. And people understood if they're going to volunteer for it, here's the scope of the task. And it's not going to go beyond that scope. If it does, it's yet another down the road Panther Team. So we created three Panther Teams. The very first Panther Team focus, you'll hear, you'll hear from each team lead this evening in summary. But the first team was to take a look at the LCI, the Local Composite Index. And what are the components of that thing and how they impacting our community? Is there anything we can do to amplify one, attenuate another, and have an impact on our point eight rate? That was Team One, that was led by Mr. Curry and myself. The second team was looking at innovative, creative supplemental funding sources for school that was led by Dr. Grinsley and she'll be commenting on that. And then we recruited Gary Angel to be a leader for Team Three because he can't say no. And that was focused strictly on philanthropy, local philanthropy. And so each one of those teams got kicked off. I'm going to say it was early summer, late spring of last year. And tonight, those products from those teams are being presented that are available for the public to review. You're going to see the summary, the documents, and you will hear the summaries from the very team lead. Like here is what we have here in here. Just thinking about had infographic. So the attention to board docs will find three things. You should see, I believe, this presentation, the two page infographic that's been available for a little while, the multi-page report that has all the detail that you would ever want to read. And then appendices to that report that has even more detail than you will want to read. But it's all there, a lot of work done, probably a lot of people. As was noted, Mills and I led Team One regarding the local composite index. This is a topic that anybody in the community has known as a big deal for us for a long time. We know that we have a high LCI many years ago, that it's a bit of a study to try to understand why that is the case. So our team came together to look at all angles of that, understand the inputs and how am I able to move some inputs to create better LCI output for us? There was still a line of vision to camp for in. As Mr. Mills said, we invited others from the community who expressed interest to help us in this journey. And you can see on the screen, KCI, H. Blenny, former county administrator, Jonathan Pardey, and Matthew Black, all participated. The two of us and researching all of these topics and helping to better understand the LCI. And put together the report that you can read in this presentation as just the output for that. The key facts, the LCI was developed 40 years ago. And surprisingly, the General Assembly thinks it's still developed today. There's evidence by the fact that they haven't changed. The state allocates funding to localities based on their ability to pay. And they believe the LCI formula is a proxy to determine a localities ability to pay. Therefore, the state believes that we have the highest ability to pay of any county in the state because of the max debt pointing. Why are we maxed out? We'll get through that. There have been many attempts to modify this formula through the General Assembly for the last many years, and they typically fail. There is a bill right now, House Bill 1164, that I'll talk about a little bit later. The three main components of the LCI are shown in the graphic on the screen. 10% of your local taxable retail sales, 40% of the local adjusted gross income, and 50% of local true value property. These values are particularly sensitive for small schools like Rappahannock County or peer schools. And that's because the population of the community and the ADM are the denominator of this overall equation. So you have a very small denominator. Small changes in that numerator can change and cause drastic changes in the outcome. And we've seen that as our ADM goes down, the LCI goes up. It's hard to push it the other way. In addition, because the LCI incorporates total value of adjusted gross income divided by the total population at school, it basically looks at the average income from the community. So the average income of the community can be drastically impacted by very few, very high wage earners individuals. And there's a description here in the summary that acts as if you have a billionaire that happens to move into your community, that can shift your average by millions. And then push up your LCI. In addition, the true incorporation of the true value of property into the formula doesn't well represent our ability to pay because we don't tax on the true value of property. In our community, because we want to preserve our open land, we provide the opportunity to our citizens to place their property into land use taxation program. That today means the property of a lower grade, recognizing that it doesn't need as many services. And it helps them keep their property together to avoid very high taxes. Unfortunately, if the formula doesn't incorporate that land use benefit. And we don't, even though we don't collect money of the true market benefit from taxes, the formula considers that we do, which pushes the LCI out. So the key findings from our group. We don't expect the formula to change. It hasn't changed in 40 years. It's an attempted to have changes over the last, many recent General Assembly sessions, hasn't done as much. The biggest input for us is the population and the ADM, which we don't see changing very much. Those that are aware, the Seminoles sent us for 2010 and 2020, we have the exact same population over a 10-year period. That's our land use vision here in this community not to grow. So that doesn't foretell that our LCI is going to improve. As we noted, very few high wage earners can push our LCI up. If you look at our median income versus our average income, our mean income, that's 18% difference. That's a significant input out of our scheme. Because we use land use taxation and 26.6% of land in the county is in land use, that again vastly reduces the collection of revenue into the county. So we can protect that from land, but the state doesn't consider that before you. The calculation that one of our members performed suggests that's approximately $550,000 a year that we lose from the state because we use land use taxation. Now, the benefit we get is what you see when you walk outside. And however, the formula does recognize the lower value of conservation. So what can we do about it and what are our next steps? It does, well, it appears that the incorporation of the property tax rate into the formula is not likely to occur. We should still be advocating for that to happen. And right now, HB 1164 is still on this year. There's usually a bill every year, HB 1164 is alive this year that would do just that, incorporate land use benefit into the LCI. So all your representatives and loved anything, they should approve 1164. One of the main takeaways from the group was that the LCI formula is patently unfavorable to Rappahannock County because of the percentages of land use, abandoned land use program, and the fact that it uses the HSI that we can't tax anyway. So that motivating factor should drive us when we talk to our legislators about other funding potentials that Team Two looked at. And then anything we can do to drive ADM up, such as looking at children in private school or home school, getting partial credit for students, getting part-time school. Anything we can do to increase the denominator will help that the overall CI down. So that is our, a very summarized version of our findings. Appreciate you reading the report and I'll pass things over to Dr. Grinsley.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Just so impressed by the work that Panther Team One did. And if you do have a chance, do click on those links that are in the report appendices. And they have created so many analysis tools that you can plug in and just see the outcomes. So many smart people, we are so blessed here. So Panther Team Two, we looked at the state budget and the constructs that the state uses to fund public education. Basically to find other opportunities, maybe to create creative partnerships with other small districts that were in similar situations as we are. And also, we were very interested in the supplemental basic aid category, where that's where we receive additional funding through our partnership of Madison. Madison County known as the Madison Agreement. So basically, in supplemental basic aid, because we have an agreement with that contiguous county, we share some services and then we get a portion of aid called supplemental basic aid based on Madison's LCI. So that's an agreement that's been in place for quite a few years now. I think we're on year 12 of that agreement. So that's an area we were particularly concerned with, and do any other districts do that? Do they receive supplemental basic aid and what are they doing in those agreements? So these are Panther Team Two members. Stacy Witt, our CFO, was on that team. Eve Brooks, our retired child advocacy and state policy advisor. Steph Ritter, I see here in the audience, former legal services attorney representing low income clients and a law professor. Matthew Black, we kind of stole that Panther Team one a little bit because a lot of the overlap that occurred and he could inform our team as well. And then we got, we were very fortunate to hire on some interns from the high schools, Alec Petty and Karen Wayland. Because there was a lot of data entry and a lot of research to go back 10 years in the state formulas for every single district in the entire state. So there was a lot of work there and those interns really worked hard. They did a great job. So our process of findings, we found that no other county had a high LCI solely as a result of significant land use. However, other counties with high LCI did report that there were revenue issues related to the exclusion of taxable land in some form. The at-risk add-on formula has received significant attention and advocacy from COSARS. That's a coalition of small and rural schools to which we are a part of that, we are affiliated. But because of the LCI formula, we receive very little assistance through the formula. So even though there's a lot of emphasis on at-risk add-on because it incorporates a lot more pieces of what makes students at-risk in different divisions, it's still run through the LCI. So we receive very little from that. Adding a minimum allocation floor for districts of at least $200,000 would generate a much more proportionate formula for addressing those needs. And we have seen the state start to move in that direction a little bit as we saw with the infrastructure line last year. And now with the school construction and modernization line. So that's great. So it sounds like they're starting to see some of those amenities. The cost of competing adjustment or COCO, this will be brought up. And that might be funding that could help receive additional assistance when we're competing with surrounding districts for compensation. COCO went into effect several years ago now with schools that were competing with more junior schools. So I provided this chart here in the report too, where as you can see, Rappahannock, a little R, sort of just kind of went right around us. We're still, we're still nestled in there competing with all those districts. So we did make sure to emphasize that in the report too. So advocacy for adding Rappahannock to the COCO one will be nice, even if it was a secondary phase in. Only one other school district in the entire state uses supplemental basic aid, and that's Highland County. So they're the only other ones that use that mechanism. However, what's interesting about that is that Rappahannock is capped. And the amount of supplemental basic aid that we receive, however, Highland County is not. So Highland County with, I think they only have 176 students, K-12, received more than double the amount that we did in supplemental basic aid, even though we have so many more students. So that's something we definitely want to look at. That is something I was able to speak with Elga Weber about, about that language in the 2010 iteration of the General Assembly language that says that. So hopefully, he can help us out with that. Maybe not this session because of when it's coming out, they are in session now, but hopefully soon in the future. We wanted to explore the feasibility, securing line in the state budget to address the loss of state by excluding our CPS from the use of market rate for land and land use like Mr. Curry was talking about. Continue to engage with COSARS. The Coalition of Small and Rural Schools is becoming a more powerful voice in Richmond. And JLR, we had heard in our research, we had seen that there was a JLR study coming up about LCI in particular. And that report was supposed to be completed by 2024. COSARS saw our SIFT infographic and actually connected us with JLR. And Mr. Curry and myself were able to actually interview with JLR about our findings and give them our materials. It was really exciting to be able to sit at the table. Oh gosh, you're going to JLR, the Joint Legislative ABC, something committee. Anyway, this is a non-harcising group that does research, thank you, research almost. But they do their, and you've seen JLR studies and recommendations, I'm sure, of a lot of different issues. But they informed the General Assembly in different areas that they are unleashing. Basically said, Rappahannock has a seat at the table with this study and they are pushing up their report date to hopefully December 2022. So that's exciting. We would like to work in coalition with other small districts to extend the COCO funding to Rappahannock. And that is something that JLR did bring up because that is, that COCO basement plan for districts was a JLR recommendation previously. So they had brought that up and we were able to share with them that that's something we would love to forget. Advocate for the feasibility of adding a floor of $200,000 at least to other budget categories like they have with the infrastructure and modernization line. That is a huge benefit to small counties whose LCI really cuts short what the intent of that funding generally is. We would like to seek language amended to chapter 589 of the 2008 General Assembly language that caps the supplemental basic aid for just Rappahannock. Very strange that just Rappahannock is in there, not anyone else. Explore the possibility of working with other contiguous counties with lower LCIs that Madison, should the cap be removed? We may want to look at Page 11, for instance, it has a much lower LCI and a new VOTEC center that we may be able to, partnership with LOCC. So there may be a lot of opportunities there. And I didn't see anything in the language, so we couldn't cooperate with more than one. So maybe additional opportunities there too. And that is a quick summary of the findings and the work done on Panther Team Two. So this time I will hand it over to Mr. Angel.
Gary, I was wondering, it's so much easier to hear of this demon sitting over here where you require.
Actually, if I turn this on, I bet you're getting close to it.
I mean, he's saying so well. And you're probably going to be hearing better. Demon?
Not at all.
Gary, Gary. Spelled differently.
Well, thank you for this present opportunity to make a presentation. Panther Team Three, the 42 Opic Opportunities Team. Mission was to explore unrealized opportunities for land use for public schools. We started out with two kind of caveats. One is it would be unsuccessful to build in more philanthropic giving if that was a substitute for a public support for the schools. So the basis, the public support of public schools, the framework is over and above that basic support. Second thing is we need alignment. We want every dollar that the state will provide or the feds will provide to go to our kids. We wouldn't want to. We wouldn't want to bottom out and campaign for private dollars to replace public dollars in that sense. So we want to align and make sure that we're looking for those strategic interventions. We can't begin to duplicate the county budget for schools, but we can strategically bring in dollars that will make a difference, maybe, between keeping those distinctive, important things that make rappahannic the best choice for public education in our region. We are trying also to align with the first two team reports that you've heard. A D M is one thing we might be able to work on. So to the extent that private dollars help support distinctive programs that distinguish us from surrounding counties, we might get to the point where parents would actually make a choice to live in rappahannic in some areas for rappahannic schools, because we offer those children an opportunity to grow and thrive and be ready for the rest of their life that our surrounding counties aren't doing yet. So that's where we started. I want to imagine thank some important people who really helped. Betsy Dito, who's here, was part of the four, and also Lindal. So the three of us were sort of the steering committee for this project. But we had incredible help from some very important advisors, Di Agri, Butler Black from RAC, Dr. Tom Massey, who's now the Chair of Fand the Futures, the Superintendent, and Steph Greer, who we doubled him with Steph. Thank you. Some of our key findings, rappahannic size is both a blessing and a curse. The difficult thing is it's a very small population, and as Mr. Curry has already said, the A D M is the denominator, and so a small number of those students, that doesn't help us too much, especially if it begins to drop. On the other hand, we are an incredibly minimal school district, with 131 divisions in the Commonwealth, I define one. Those more creative, more responsive to circumstances, can reposition, regroup, and move forward faster. And that, I would cite the COVID response as absent evidence of that. We were a county international leader. On the way, our little school district, we were all rappahannic, put together an N C I S team that was doing better on contact tracing than the district California. Not too many other school districts could make that claim. There are many others. The L C I, you've heard all you need to hear about that. We had hoped, all of us had hoped, that through more rigorous analysis, there might be a way to move that out of a very comprehensive detailed study that appears at the A D M is about the only thing that we ever noticed to COVID. I'm doing anything about it next couple of years. We all came to the conclusion, this committee, that it's hard to ask for the county tax fairer than they're doing that. It has now reached about 49. something of the overall county budget, if you include the cafeteria piece. Mr. Curry probably has the statistics of these numbers, but somewhere else, let's just write it up to 50s. That seems like the upper limit to many of us of what the county can be asked to do for the public schools. We also know that disproportionately, it's parents of our school kids who feel the tax increases the hardest. And so those are kind of good positions to start at. We may have some wealthy people, but by and large, it's the people with fewer resources, less income, more kids, whose children are trying to educate, who might be forced to move out of our county, get taxes become in higher. So those are fixed rarities. We also know that we benefit from disproportionate generosity. If you look at the number of people living in rappahannic, and you look at the amount of charitable dollars that come out of this county out of private pockets, again, I would ask you, compared to any other county in the Commonwealth, that would come out much better for capital. So we have that to go in. We know we have folks who are able to give, who want to give, and will give if we can convince them that their dollars are going to make a fundamental difference to education this year. The last thing that was kind of an early surprise, we did some work around what was the best vehicle to try and get more dollars to public education. Some of us thought, well, let's consider creating a private endowment for public education. As we looked through that and studied other states, we discovered that that front league is not a very prudent way to go about it, and the main reason is you have to raise millions and millions of dollars before the end of the year, especially these current days, is why you generate enough money to make much of a difference to the budget. The second reason is that when you create those instruments, they're not very nimble. They're kind of very large, bulky pieces. So we decided that we would not pursue that as a potential opportunity. We would look for other options for having private dollars to support public education. So that brings us to kind of last page, and that's so what, what three factors we recommended. We tried to identify those strategic points in the budget where private dollars need to be most effective. And without any question, every survey, every study shows the quality of your teachers is a poor factor of the quality of your private. I'm pleased that since I've been around, we have positioned ourselves more competitively with the surrounding counties, but we still, it's tough. So one of the things we said was if we could channel private dollars in a way that would supplement state revenue and county revenue for teachers, might that not be a way to make a big difference? And it turned out we were right. So in some early outreach, some funds were made available to the superintendent of this hiring line that began to use proven methods proven by other states, such as signing bonuses, such as assistance in booting, such as helping potentially pay down student debt, helping to acquire additional education, perhaps some native housing supplement, things that are outside of the school contract really, but are incentives to attract and retain the very best teachers. So that was kind of like priority number one. Priority number two was to identify those distinctives that Madison truly creates in the school system. Now, we already have some, farm to take, home to be fit. I would say profile of a graduate. I know that that's a state mandate for every public school district, but what's surprising is so few have really changed anything that they were doing before. They simply repackage it and say, oh, we're doing all this. Rappahannic actually started to ramp up and has rebuilt an entire school around the idea that our graduates are going to be ready to face life. They're going to be life ready. And tonight, you heard a perfect presentation of that. You know, I sit out there and I'm thrilled as a former educator. This isn't on paper, this is real stuff. Look at what profile of a graduate says we are supposed to do these kids under rent for life, and then tick off the boxes as you hear the presentation on about Ag Academy. It's practical education. They learn in the classroom, they go out and they learn in life, and then when they graduate, they have a certificate that says, try me, I'm ready to go. Whether they go on for four years of college or not, they already have a launch pad for the rest of their life. So Ag Academy, Ag Academy, Hope Fine Arts Academy, these are vulnerable because the state support isn't there for them. These are sort of the really distinctives in this county, but unless we can find private support for them, they're going to be vulnerable. So we're going to try and find a way to reach out to people in this county and say, are you interested in agriculture? Are you interested in F F A, what it does for kids? Would you be willing to make a contribution to that fund, support the F F A, support the Ag Academy, or the Health Science Board of Inno-ones? We have a few others in mind. We think we can become successful in identifying potential governors who probably haven't given before, who might be willing on an annual basis to make a contribution to a specific program. And then we have to find vehicles to get that money from the private hands into the school budget. So that's where we're working. But our goal is to make rappahannic public, help make rappahannic public schools the best choice, and we think we see a way we can get there. But it's going to take strategic deployment of funds, both public and private, and we have to continue supporting some pretty fabulous folks. I'm not saying anything about that guy who, there's the principal of high school, he's got enough praise already, we don't want to say his name. Or the superintendent, who we know as a fact, but practical, from kindergarten right on through. The school staff, the school teachers that have been built in over the past couple of years are superb. And we have a story to tell, and that's an important point, we tell the story and then he asks for the money. So we hope that they're there and they'll make it known, we have the best school in the region, and you should really consider sending kids here. That will help the A D M, it also helps people get money. So that's the end of that presentation. Thank you, Gary.
I'm lucky not to get to discuss the next steps. And first of all, it is so impressive to me that this community comes together over and over to help one another. Students are, I think, very easy to think about, care about, and want to help, but neighbors and hopefully these students that are going through the F F A and Ag Academy and stuff like that are going to come back here and work, because boy, we've got work in those fields. But we had, I think, between 15 and 20, probably on the close side, participating citizens in this project, and obviously, they gave a lot of their time, heart, and soul, but yes, because they care about the students. And they all have diverse backgrounds. This county is just amazing to me, the people that we have that live here and their backgrounds. You get a chance, ask somebody what they do, I'd be surprised. That's one great thing about the new restaurant, you get to meet a lot of interesting people. Most of the time, that's a good thing. The other thing that I liked is we aren't just sitting back as a county enjoying, oh, poor, poor, pitiful us, we have a horrible L C I, there's nothing we can do about it. Personally, I don't think a panther would do that, so I'm very glad that the community agrees with that attitude. Raising awareness, I wanted to start there, because the presentation that you saw today, the documentation, I believe, is going to be available on the county website, the school board website, and Word docs, obviously, we're good with Word docs. But if someone would like a hard copy, we can, I think, make those available through the school as well as through the county, if anyone wants them.
Might you put something in the library as well? That'd not work.
Somebody else had asked that as well.
Absolutely. I guess, so I would just make clear, we did write a final report, and we do have a summary. Those are very reasonable things to put in the library. But the supporting data is, you know, it's a hugely expensive task to make. And so, but there are people that they're going to want to see the supporting data, and basically, it's online. And we'll find a way, how can you get to it if you can't get to it? It's just too much to prep.
Number two, I wanted to look at advocating for this. Our legislators, they just spent a considerable amount of time in Richmond with them, talking about different subjects. This time of year is really not the time to start with advocating. In the summertime, when you can get them out for a cup of coffee or lunch or something to, they have time, they can focus on what you're telling them. It also gives them a chance to create a bill, should this be something they're passionate about, you can help them write it. But it's not January 1 that you want to start that conversation, it's actually in the summertime, and I think you already do that, apparently, I'm sure, but the citizen is who, tell you whoever wants to hear from, Senator O'Bea wants to hear from, they take your name, all that mixed up, because you vote, and that makes you very important when you're down in Richmond or sitting in the council. So please advocate for, I think we've had, we've found one bill, but I think there were a couple, but you can write in right now, call their office, send them an email, tell them it's important in line. Number three, discuss, this initiative has created an interesting bonus, I think, because it created a process that the infrastructure is there should another topic of interest come up to the school and the county that they can use. And it took one good idea in last year's meeting, they used Supervisor Smith, to get this process going and look at what we got at the end of it. So I am very excited about what everyone has achieved, which leads me to achieve. We have a resolution that is the outcome that at least we can send a message jointly from the school board and the Board of Supervisors, if everyone choose to sign it, vote for it and sign it. And I've been asked to read it, so bear with me. There's a little water, it's not shown. So Joint School Board and Board of Supervisors Resolution to Support Additional Education State Funding for Rappahannock County Due to the inaccurate depiction of a locality's ability to pay using the state L C I formula. Whereas Virginia's Local Compartment Index Formula was developed over 40 years ago and continues to be used to allocate funding to counties and districts. And whereas the L C I formula utilizes averages to compute local adjusted gross income, which are sensitive to extreme values, resulting in an inaccurate picture of a locality's overall ability to pay, not the state counties and districts are prohibited but the state from taxing personal income. And whereas the L C I formula values property in conservation easement at its lower assessed value, but values property in the land use valuation program at its theoretical full market value rather than its lower use value, even though taxes are levying a much lower amount. And whereas the L C I's formula's inconsistent treatment of evaluating property overestimates the locality's relative ability to fund education by creating artificially high L C I values in localities with large proportions of property and land use. And whereas Rappahannock County currently has a computed L C I of .8000, meaning the locality is responsible for 80% of the standards of quality costs associated with educating its children. And whereas to further its low-impact land development visions, Rappahannock County employs land use valuation far more than any other Virginia school district, resulting in an estimated state L C I penalty of approximately 550,000 per year in state school funding. And whereas the impact of the unfair treatment of land value and A G I is far more pronounced in Rappahannock County because of its low citizen population of 7,373, declining school enrollment, skewed mean A G I values, and high percentages of in land use. And whereas there are relatively very few rural localities that are similarly positioned with Rappahannock County, who have a very low student and citizen population with a very high L C I due in large part to the inequities introduced. Now, therefore, be it resolved, that the Rappahannock County School Board and the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors jointly ask the Commonwealth of Virginia to adopt a budget that considers the expressed inequities to the very few rural counties with low populations and high L C I. Considers providing an alternative supplemental funding source to offset the penalty incurred by these districts. Considers adjusting the L C I formula to utilize more accurate indicators of the locality's ability to pay, i.e. the mean A G I rather than mean incorporation of land use valuation similar to the way land in conservation easement is treated. And be it further resolved that we deliver this resolution to state legislators representing Rappahannock County and also to the Senate and House Finance Committee Chairs in the General Assembly of Virginia, adopted this 8th day of February 2022.
It's our intention for these boards to vote and for us to sign and to forward this document this evening. And there is on the agenda that action I have after the public conference. Is there any question or comment from the boards concerning the report at this time?
Thank you for all your hard work.
I want everybody to know that Dr. Gritzley took on the Panther share, I was going to say lion's share, Panther share, the word load when it came to assembly, and there was no small test. So each of our teams assembled our results, but then, you know, things had to get normalized, and it was a big lift, and so we're appreciative for your work there. Anything else? Should we check with Kier to see if he's got his hands up over there?
Thank you. It looks like we'll have an opportunity later to chime in. Just a comment, I'd already presented today, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll leave my comments, thank you.
At this time, I'd like to open the floor to public comment addressing both the Board of Supervisors and the school board. If anyone wishes to speak, please raise your hand. Code them and let us know your name and your district. Seems to be a repeat of last night. Anyone on Zoom world wishing to speak, please raise your Zoom hand and Dr. Grigsley will unmute you.
Chair, I see none.
Thank you. All right, I'll close the public comment.
Are the boards quite happy to break them into that next line? Fourth comments. It's right on the agenda. Thanks. Right. Is there any comments from the school board this evening? Before we take off?
It's just wonderful to see so many different people working together.
It was.
It's a really big spread and a academy, and it's just really wonderful to see.
You know what's interesting, Rich? Is so many, Team One, so many strong personalities.
You're right.
And to harness all of that energy and try to, and to bring it together. But what an awesome team. It's like trying to provide a team of great forces. But it was, it is fascinating and a great community. And no trouble finding people that were saying, you know, I'll help with that. I'll take this. And so our first meeting, here at our first meeting, we're like, yeah, we break this down. Who's gonna focus on what? Who's very encouraged on how aggressive people were with what it is they can contribute? So it was great. And if you have an opportunity to thank one of these people that signed up to help, we could just say, hey, good job. Appreciate the help. Because every one of them gave a lot.
Look at all the managers. They're dynamic.
Anything else from the board?
No. All right, I'll open it up to the Board of Supervisors.
I would just echo the comments of my colleagues on the school board. I think it's clearly a very dynamic group of individuals that was able to come together and work through some very complex topics that are affecting our community in very profound ways. And I'm just so incredibly appreciative. And I can see that the individuals involved, I'm sure it was a very natural and organic process, and everyone brought their strengths to the table. And I just really appreciate that so much. The time and all those volunteers is incredibly valuable. And it clearly is one of our key strengths to work with, especially in this evening. I just, I'm so encouraged about the options that this report brings forward in terms of the bills we'll be able to ask our legislators to put through this report. And it's likely we can ask for them to remove, so we can qualify for funding like other areas do. You know, these may seem like small things, but in the big picture, it's under schools. It came through the depths. And so many things throughout the time that everyone spent in pursuit of this project. And I think they all should be reviser for the child in our school system. So as I hear and listen to how wonderful our schools are, but I see it every day with my graduate and my currently enrolled student. And I just thank you all very much for everything you do for our children and the community.
I would like to thank all Panther teams for a massive amount of work that they've done. And I think Rappahannock is incredibly lucky to have the great trust that we have in these folks to go head on with these issues. And I think it is representative of how our county can be at and give views. And so from the bottom of my heart, thank you all for the work that you've done.
Mr. Whitson?
Sure. Thanks very much. I've got, since we're talking most immediately about the SIF initiative, I'll start there. I think it's a question, maybe for Mr. Curry, just to make sure I understand one of the conclusions. First of all, thank you everyone who contributed to it. It's great to see analysis like that instead of the ongoing bringing of our hands and game whatever you're gonna do about this unfavorable L C I. So thanks very much for everyone in the community and within the school system who contributed to this effort. I don't know if I'm encouraged or discouraged by one of the outcomes of the SIF analysis on the L C I front. I think for a long time ago, I agree with him under the assumption that a land use taxation policy is a good cause of an unfavorable L C I. And my question to Mr. Curry, is my correct that the determination in the end was, even if we were able to add our land use properties valued at their, you know, lower tax valuation, it would effectively only lower our local contribution to the school system by about six and a half percent? Does that sound correct?
Uh, it said it. I believe, I think it was five hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Right. I'm sure that weighs six or seven. Yeah, I think that, yeah, I just want to be clear, considering the goods. I think a lot of people were blocking the, this is one of the major driving factors that are unfavorable L C I. Yet it comes out to the half a million dollars on the eight million dollar cap. You're probably, the eight million dollar cap, you're using for localities, so it suggests, you know, problem is much bigger. And it also is encouraging in the sense that, that we all feel less pressure to look at our land use policies in the context of the L C I. Because adjustments in land use taxation is one example. Wouldn't gain us, I mean, half a million dollars is nothing to sneeze at, but it wouldn't gain us that much within the context of our local contribution. So I guess I was just surprised that that five hundred thousand dollars wasn't worth it. Very quickly, I just, I have a very quick follow-up question to Dr. Grigsley. Thank you for the unscathed presentation. I feel very tougher in leadership in the school system than Mr. Bills and his colleagues on the school board. So thank you all. Firstly, you're well aware, and I know you talked to Mr. Curry about our broadband initiative, through all points broadband, that our remaining funding gap, that's a little bit above three thousand dollars. And we appreciate the contributions made toward our local money we're gonna have to put in this initiative. I just wonder if you have any other ideas from the school, any other funding sources that might be available? Does that help us reach that remaining gap? That's the first question. Second question is, are teachers now raising their promise to be seen to be ranking better now that we have a long time among our neighbors in terms of compensation for our teachers who are so critical to our school system? If you set aside this salary portion now that you see more competitive than we have been, what else can we do within our local government to improve our recruitment and our retention numbers? Third question, central office staffing levels. I wonder, and I did this in your presentation, I saw you had a lot of analysis about staffing levels among teachers tied to S O Qs. But I'm wondering if there's S O Q points to your central office staff? If not, how does central office staff determine? Fourth question is, go quickly, if you just explained interlocking and partnership, which you mentioned asking. And then finally, one to find your need, what are your current constantly significant capital projects just are coming, my, or just, that's it. Thanks.
Okay, I think we've got all of our time. So starting with your first question.
Can you repeat those so the people can hear Kier on this meeting? So I know they can hear.
I'm sorry about that.
So if you could repeat.
Sure. So Mr. Whitson's first question was about the broadband initiative. There's currently a gap in funding of about three hundred thousand, and he was wondering if we had any other ideas from the lens of the school? If there's additional funds available, is how I took your question. The amount of money that the school board has earmarked for the broadband initiative at this point is strictly tied to the serving the students who are underserved that, as a COVID impact, is tied to the S R P. So it's a very stringent line of funding tied to those numbers. And luckily, that the broadband authority and Dr. Bolt did quite a bit of work on G I S mapping and how the locations of all those folks. And we did a lot of that data collection through our response to COVID. I will tell you that Dr. Bolt is also researching some other grants that are coming through to help with connectivity of students. I'm not so sure how, if those can be directly linked to broadband infrastructure development, but maybe service connectivity later down the road and costs of those things. But we'll keep you posted because it is of very much interest to our student population as only one-third of our students actually have connectivity to a reliable internet. Number two, teacher salaries. Oh, to improve improvement and retention in the county? I think just continuing to collaborate, work together like this, and really tackle tough solutions and troubleshoot. The SIF report is a great example, and that will help us determine areas where there can be perhaps supplementary alternatives or demographic opportunities to support or bolster those areas that we sometimes can't provide the additional support. One quick example is like professional development. If we look at other counties, their professional development team may have fifty people in it that provide all this ongoing coaching and training with the state-of-the-art, you know, materials and programs and platforms and all of those things. And we provide a lot of that for our staff and any of those free models we can get on B D O P, which are awesome to watch. They play that. So professional development, we only receive federal funding of about twenty-five thousand in type two to help support that. And it takes a lot more if you want to actually enhance professional development. And that's one area that philanthropy does help us out and has with our teacher wellness grant because some of that professional development and building capacity is included in that. So that really does help. Central office, yes, there is S O Q linked to that staffing directly. Standards of quality do say how many support staff that you need at a central level to comply with certain mandates. Like your assistant superintendent is providing S O Q with so many certain ratio. But you remember in a small county, we wear lots of different hats. So my assistant superintendent is also my sped director, title one coordinator, title three coordinator, among many other things. Same with your superintendent, who's gifted instruction, curriculum instruction, title two, grant writing, valuation support, finance, omega reimbursements. I mean, we do all of that. So something we did bring up in our standards of quality discussion with J L R was, you should realize we're now among smaller districts staffing who take on all of the same compliance mandates as these large districts. We are subject to the same reporting, the same reimbursements, the same compliance, but yet we have so far fewer staff to do, so we are doing it all. And sometimes on the weekends, on our corners, those work in their state audits, which I haven't been to report them. So those are linked to S O Q, yes, sir. And those are in the support area generally, which are subject to the support cap, which greater exacerbates our ability to fund those adequately. The Rockingham Agreement is where the first step initiative went. So we took our preschool development grant, which was just a local grant, and we were part of the bigger cohort, cohort three, I believe it was, the Virginia Early Childhood Foundation. And they wanted to expand into a regional partnership because they were making so much ground with the Lincoln V Initiative is what it's called, First of Five, and the development of new standards for that continuum. Rappahannock was a big part of developing those and helping the state with a lot of that data, and now it's gone more regional. So the Rockingham Agreement includes a lot of different counties. I can't remember who exactly is in the partnership, as I've been a little bit more removed from it now. But Lisa Payne Wells at C C L C is the direct contact there. I hope I got them all.
Last thing was just, we're completing significantly capital projects in the next four years.
Yes. Yes, sir. So our five-year capital improvement plan is still intact. If this, if the school construction line does go through, we will be able to probably condense that five-year capital improvement plan into two, which is incredible. So the amount of projects we'll be able to get done, a lot of our, they tackle bigger things like our school track that needed some refurbishment, you know, all of our bleachers and concession areas and bathrooms and some of those old other areas that the students actually brought up and said, I wish we could get to those a little quicker. Your capital improvement plan, we use these a lot. So, yeah, we're really excited about that.
All right, keep smiling.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson. Sorry that you were unable to hear him. Will that, Mr. Curry, is that on tape, audio later, if they wanted to hear what Mr. Whitson was saying?
Definitely a possibility.
Thank you for that. The question that Mr. Whitson asked with regards to the capital improvements and stuff like that, I'm wondering if there is an opportunity because we got grand dollars through the state and Fed in the past couple of years where there's, did you see savings in areas where it had money vested, but now the rent's gonna cover it? So you've got a little bit of cash in the bank like we do in the county that could go to other expenses?
That's difficult because the costs we're really dealing with now are millerating what we're seeing from COVID impacts. So there's so much more we could be doing with that funding and supporting students and trying to maintain for as long as we are able that the federal dollars to provide those supports longer, more longitudinally than just a single year. So we're trying really hard to preserve it since we do have till FY twenty-four, well, in FY twenty-five to spend and recover through that September thirtieth year. So we are trying to stretch those dollars as far as we can, knowing that that's probably going to go away and there's probably not going to be much more federal support for the COVID relief. So we're trying to stretch as far as we can. We are always working very hard to keep the budget as conservative as possible with the understanding that we do realize the situation. Many of our families are in the county, so we do have a very sympathetic ear to that motion, so we will do our best.
I would say that school does not retain those funds that were left unspent at the end of the year. There are a few bills under consideration this session to discuss that. So they don't have any cash on the side. All that is converted back to the general fund for the county and the board can apply this as inappropriate. But we did see through CARES Act and a few others that there was some capital projects that were going to be completed using those dollars rather than local kind of tax dollars. And we will have to invest in those again, for example, the auditorium seating project. So that was all done with eighty thousand or so dollars, CARES dollars. And that freedom, those eighty thousand dollars are local dollars, either to be put towards something else or just fall back to the county at the end of that fiscal year, which a lot of that did that year.
Thank you for that. The comment about the low L C I is the agreement we've got in Madison and contiguous counties. I'm assuming you have to make a contingency plan?
Yes.
Just a thought. The mention Mr. Angel said about life ready and the propeller for life, is that propeller for life requirement statement somewhere that's keeping a mind? I would be very interested.
Sure. The profile congratulates our conceptual framework because it encompasses a plan, and that is on the website. And there's information about the state's iteration of what that looks like, what we sort of evolved it further to apply more to the Rappahannock plans.
A few more things. I'm just wondering for the audience, how we found the team members that we had on Team One, Two, and Three? Or did we go knocking on doors?
Initially, we, after there was a lot of discussion, we head walkers, Gary Angel started the community conversations, if you recall back then. We started really just getting a lot of attention around, wow, we really do have some funding issues here, applies it like that. And then when Supervisor Smith had said, we really need a task force, really, they did more. Mr. Curry and I said, well, we can do that. And we sent out some emails to those who we knew were involved in budget a lot and had interest there and sent out emails. We even put it on social media that way to recruit. We even put it on social media that way to recruit it. It was made that people volunteered pretty quickly. And then others word of mouth said, hey, if you know a bit about this, please come on to you and help support this. So it was a great project, yeah.
Some were voluntold.
The other thing that became very clear to me when the students, the F M A, students were speaking, we think of the F M A as animals and farmers and stuff like that, but what became very clear to me, because we heard it from multiple students, public speaking, meeting management, teamwork working together, I'm just wondering if that to get up before in the morning to feed the animals, so it's real.
They do. Not all of them actually have real farm experience, but some of them, yeah.
No, absolutely. All right, thank you. That was all my questions. Do we have anybody else that had something to add?
Now we move on to our act of action. So we're going to have two motions, one to mark and one to list. Is there a motion to adopt the joint letter resolution that is presented to see? We have a motion, Mr. Curry, is there a second? We have a second from Ms. Meyer. Any discussion? Good letter. All the pay drive?
Aye.
No. It's order.
Thank you very much. Board of Supervisors, we have a motion to adopt the joint letter resolution that has presented. Someone dismiss it. I have to dismiss it. Here, save me and please stop.
He normally sits here, so.
Dr. Second, Paul Second. Thank you, Mr. Curry. Any discussion? All the speakers say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Winston.
I just want to make sure that you feel comfortable. I, I don't think it really critically matters for this document. Okay. So thanks.
Thank you for proceeding. Are you an a as well?
I am an a.
Thank you. All right. Let's go first.
Okay. I just want to make sure to sign that. We need to count the. We need to, not, what, what theme topic would be great? What? All right.
I have a question for your. That's it. I've got a second. Mr. Curry, any discussion? All the speakers say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Thank you, Mr. Winston. Thank you.
All right, thank you, board. We can take like a five-minute recess and while folks want to depart, can depart and we can take a bathroom break and then we'll reconvene to take up this four meeting. And Clark, Deputy Clark, appreciate you. You only got a week.
We aren't going to wait.
It's a, it's a one to five ratio and that's where you guys sit. Hey, come on. Ms. Divin, we appreciate you.
Yes, I do.
There's, there's all sorts of things that happen behind the scenes and you have no idea what she's doing, but I can tell you she's constant communication with me and Shannon and, and making things happen, right? And so that's a, that's what is, Ms. Michelle?
Yes.
She's your backup and very dependable.
She helps me a lot today.
She's helped us out many times. Anyway, appreciate that. And school board members, the reason I appreciate it so much is because we're going into budget cycles. They're like, it's like a roller coaster, you know, and it's almost like the higher you go, the further you have the fall type problem. And I'm like, can't we make it like June or something like that? Anyway. Don't make it, yes, sir.
We are having technical difficulties. Hold on one.
Oh, cool, God. And that's why you got a week, right there.
My computer died on me. That didn't happen before, but that's why I left.
What's wrong with me?
I was shocked. It didn't die, but.
You want to use a different?
It's on my messy desk though.
Are we back now?
We're getting there. I have to reboot the Zoom now because of.
So people on the other end, they're probably still in their Zoom session. I think they probably are and they're just waiting for you to get back. Oh, I know, you're the host. So they might not be.
They might have to come back in.
Very dedicated comeback name because they're going to assume.
Paulie, I don't know if you're able to put a message to anyone who was on Zoom, they have to re-enter. Are you able to put out a message to anyone who was on Zoom to re-enter? Thanks. But they're already do. All right, Mr. Chairman, you can go ahead and continue.
Okay, Zoom folks hopefully you can hear, sorry we lost you. Technical difficulties, we're back. We're resuming at six, no, eight point three in our agenda. It's donations.
I have several to report. Eddie and Lauren Barron donated a microwave to the athletics concession stand. Jean Wilder donated $100 and it's to the baseball program in memory of Mr. James Alder. And Jeff and Destiny Compton donated $71.99 and this is, this was used to purchase a new U.S. flag for the gym at the high school.
Great. Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes from January 11th and January 20 meetings? So we have a motion, Mr. Ruth, is there a second? Second from Ms. Meyer, is there any discussion? All the pay drive?
Aye.
No. School group, Mr. Curry, did you have opportunity to review the bills?
I did and everything looks to be in order.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent yet?
Number?
We have a motion, Mr. Biden, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Grove, all the pay drive?
Aye.
Aye, votes no. This is order. Bill Grimbley.
Hi, yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. The first item on the agenda is 10.1, the school calendar. So Dr. Johnson, invite you to the podium. Please hold the mic very close to your mouth and speak very lovely in your teacher voice. Thank you.
You might have to turn it back on.
Good evening, can you hear me? Okay, good. All right, thank you for the opportunity to present a proposed calendar for next school year. I don't have anything earth shattering to bring to you this evening. Just a quick reminder of the traditional calendar that we had up until 2019. We're required to have 180 days in the school year and 990 hours. And up until 2019, we tried to build extra school days into the calendar, usually around seven in case of inclement weather. So we, we tried to keep the, the first semester ending in winter break, but with the seven extra days in there, we had the potential to end earlier in the school year, sometimes as early as May the 14th if we did not have a spring break or maybe 22nd and we didn't use any inclement weather days. So after that, we went to a different model. So again, the requirements were 180 days, but instead of having the additional seven days go to there for inclement weather, we started using our additional hours in our school day or bank time in order to account for those days. So right now, we're still at 6.25 hours in our school day. It's only required to be 5.5 hours, so that results in around 10 extra days in the school year, just using those bank hours. So the calendar team convened in January. We had teachers, administrators and support staff on the calendar team. And so we looked at this year's calendar, which seemed to be a good model that worked well during the pandemic and also for the instructional needs of our staff and planning for certain pieces for our staff and our students. However, we always like to go back and reconsider that spring break time to short breaks versus one longer break because we usually get a couple of parent concerns about that during the course of the school year. It was suggested that we investigate having more early release days to allow for teacher planning. There was a suggestion to move our conference day in October, either earlier or a little bit later to coincide either with report cards going out or more early, earlier in the year so that we would have an opportunity to meet parents sooner. A later start date was suggested, consider separate conference days for elementary school and high school. And we really, as a team this year, focused on what is going to be the most educationally beneficial for students, which we always do, but at this particular year, you know, rather than having some, you know, there are sometimes comments that, you know, well, you know, this for mental health or, or, you know, something that might not be necessarily educationally related. So the first thing we did was seek some staff input on some of the suggestions that came up from the calendar team. So we did a short survey to the staff asking about the early release days because there had been a concern that when we have early release days, that sometimes student attendance is not as good on those days. So we wanted to get the feedback from the teachers, you know, would this impact your ability to get your instruction done in order to be ready for the SOLs? And 82% of the teachers said no, they did not feel that would impact your ability to get the instruction covered. We asked at the rate of preference for semester one parent-teacher conference day. There was not a lot of difference there, but the mic's up to 30 and it was preferred. We did talk about how we could have a one-week later start date and we could not go any later than one week because we firmly believe that it is an educational necessity for our high school students to have that first semester end at the end of Christmas break and then not come back in and try to make up a couple of weeks of, you know, instruction for the SOL. So one week later was as much as we could do and in order to get a one-week later start date, we would have to extend the school year several days at the end. So when asked if they would prefer that, to get a one-week later start date, 82% of the staff said no. Then we asked about the two separate spring breaks and as opposed to one week, 74% of our staff said that they felt that the two separate spring breaks were more educationally beneficial for our students. And then finally, the, the concept of maybe separating parent-teacher conference days between the elementary school and the high school so that parents had students in both schools, it might make it a little bit easier. 72% of the staff said they didn't think that would be helpful. So we put two calendars out based on that information. Again, the 180 days of instruction, 87 for semester, 93 second semester, a full day of parent-teacher conference day in September. We maintained eight professional development days and again, we have online options that are offered through L F C C. And then, you know, of course due to pandemic, we've gotten creative, so we have what we call mailbox PD now so that teachers can kind of learn at their pace when they have the opportunity to, to sit down and, and work with that. We maintained two work days at the start of semester two, staff really, even though I think we missed those days this year because of snow, they still feel like that's, you know, good, helpful to be ready for the second semester. We did add two additional early release days in the first semester. The only difference in the two calendars was the spring break. So the survey was sent out and the results were that a total of 139 staff and students responded, 85 voted for calendar A, 63%, which is the one with the two shorter spring breaks. We had 16 people voting for calendar B, 47% with the week-long break. So just some of the comments that came back from the survey. We had five comments in support of the two smaller breaks, five comments supporting the week spring break for vacation and planning purposes, two comments supporting longer break to help working parents with their scheduling. There were two comments supporting the longer break due to the writing SOL schedule and that's typically in the month of March and so that March spring break gets pretty close to that writing SOL at the high school. We did have one comment suggesting a later start date in August and then our nine comments think the calendar committee. The writing SOL was an educational concern that we felt like we needed to address, so we did coordinate with the division testing coordinator and there is a window that's open in several weeks in which the students can take that writing SOL. We are able to push that back another week so that the teachers will have an extra week to instruct the students and hopefully that will mitigate the effects of the March spring break. And just wanted to take a minute to update you a little bit. Last year when I came before you, you were talking about distance learning Wednesdays because that had been, you know, a, a real benefit to many of our students last year because of the additional social emotional learning opportunities that had been made available on that day. So we were going to go back as a team and we were going to research, you know, the possibility of how those distance learning Wednesdays could look. But the Department of Education took care of that for us, saying that we would be back in school by day or week. So, so we got creative when we talked about, okay, if that Wednesday's not going to be optional, what can we do to continue to support our students in these important areas? So we built on an idea that the high school had started several years ago, which was called Panther Pride Days, in which they were, they were clubs and every student had to be a part of the club. So we decided to expand that between both of our schools, elementary and high. They would each pick a day and month in which they would offer the clubs for the students to participate in. I think the schedule is either 1:00 or 1:30 in the afternoon until the end of the day. So you can see some of the things that the elementary school came up with for their clubs for this year because, you know, they're kind of grade level center, theirs looks a little bit different, it's a little bit more structured than what we see at the high school. And then you can see on the next slide, the bidding offerings that the high school has had this year. Actually had to do some research on some of those clubs because, you know, for instance, the rowdown club. I had to ask, what is the rowdown club? And that has to do with anything that is involved with growing. So one time they might focus on doing darts or they might focus on, you know, throwing balls and things. So lots of creativity there. So for our final next steps, we are recommending that the school order improve Calendar A. Our administrative team will, you know, continue to talk about the Panther Pride Days as we move into planning for summer school. That's another opportunity for some of those social emotional learning opportunities. So thank you very much for your consideration. Are there any questions?
I have one.
Yes.
Do you have a question?
I have one other. Yeah, I was just curious, how many days of our bank time this year have we used so far?
That is a good question because, yeah, we used some at the beginning of the school year and then we've had some of the snow days. I don't have the exact number on the top of my head.
There.
But I can tell you that the last several snow days that we've had have fallen underneath of the governor's state of emergency. So at some point when we had one of the bigger storms that was forecasted, there was a state of emergency that was put in place. And it was for a longer period of time than we would have expected. I think it's still in effect until then we're in fourth.
Third.
Yeah. Yeah.
What if it's a state of emergency then?
If the days fall under state of emergency, then they do not count again since we do not have to make those up. However, we still have the instructional issue that we have. So we have, we have had our administrative team go back and work with their faculties to assess, you know, where they're at, what does it look like that they need right now. We have offered, you know, if we need to pull a day back in. For instance, we've had a professional development day this Friday that we could have made a regular school day if the staff felt like they needed that additional instructional time. Based on the feedback that principals got from the staff, they did not feel at this time that they would need that, you know, that type of additional day built into the schedule for this year. Of course, winter's not over yet. We still got two spring breaks maybe out there. So we'll probably see more of those.
I know that it's come up before, but since we had a lot of snow days this month, the idea of can we bring kids to alternate bus stops? How can we have school open more? Came up, like, came across, you know, through my inbox a lot.
Yeah, and we did, especially with the last week where it kind of melted. When we had like these.
The past freezing.
Pockets of ice spots throughout the county. And our bus transportation department actually did implement some, you know, different strategies as far as parents being with us during that time. So that is something that they're trying to stay on top of so that you don't have to, you know, miss days for the main roads were open.
Yes, and we've looked at school bus routes, snow routes before. And when you, it's not such an issue when attendance doesn't matter so much to your accreditation. And you can have snow routes along all main road, but 80% of your students want to get there. You know, how much instruction are you, you know, making up? So that was a consideration. So anytime that the weather impacts over 50% of our bus routes, we really can't come, it's difficult for attendance. However, Dr. Johnson is exactly right. The transportation department is working out alternatives for those routes that are, you know, just frequently problematic, that we can work out alternatives, double up on the route and maybe have a meeting spot where it doesn't affect so many. But I don't want people to think that we cancel if it's just just a gap or it's just one road. We never do that. It's a, we have a checklist that we go by and we're in frequent communication with VDOT, letting them know where our turnarounds are and our locations. And they, they do have that. But sometimes they leave a reminder to just give a little special extra attention for them. So we can kick going, but the goal is to get the kids in and begin.
We can also do a break.
Of course, yeah, delay of opens are utilized when necessary too.
Open the big max two hours.
Two hours.
Makes sense. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. There's one thing, I was looking, so you're promoting Calendar A as the choice tonight, right?
Calendar A, yes.
Which we'll vote on tonight. But I just have one comment about Calendar A, and it's also on CalBeep. So in August 2022, the first day of school, first day of the first semester is August the 10th, right? But we don't say that explicitly like you say other dates.
Right.
So you know those miscellaneous dates that are significant.
Yes, we caught that.
Yeah, we tend to put it in there. We put the first day of the second semester in January, but not the one in August.
Yes.
And so I know that the key tells me that the green day is birthday. But since we've been explicit about other, it'd probably be good to stick it in there.
Yes, and which I would counter. We decide to approve, we'll be sure that that gets in there for the very first day of school.
Yeah, thanks. Anything else?
About that little box I heard you tell.
Yeah, that's middle.
The little middle section that points out significant dates.
Yeah, the first day of school.
Because if I don't say it, here's what will happen. Next year, we'll take last year's and we'll update it, and it'll be missing next year. Great?
Yeah.
That's what I would do, start with last year and update it next.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Johnson. The next item on the agenda is 10.2, the Madison Agreement. There are no changes to the Madison Agreement. Both Madison and Rappahannock agree that to continue to be agreeable to the agreement.
Thank you to all of our professors.
Yeah, all of the surplus, they have first dibs on any of those vehicles that we do not want anymore, which they usually can very politely pass. But we also share other services, such as we can enroll students in their career tech programs and vice versa, as lots are available. We can, we share some evaluation, specialized evaluation testing with our visiting teacher. So we share some staffing and such where it makes sense. So it is very helpful and Rappahannock typically receives over $200,000 for this agreement. So it is worth it. We will ask the board to approve that later in the agenda. The next item is 10.3, our standing agenda item about our CPS phone check. Let me bring that up. Okay, just a review of our COVID dashboards. This was December. As you can see, we had four cases, four quarantines. In January, we saw a little bit of an uptick with five, I guess at one point, yes, eight cases altogether in the division with 10 quarantines. Here we are, February 7th. We have one case that's affected the school division in the buildings at this time. Now remember, the dashboard only counts those who have affected the school population, so any risk of exposure at school. But what it's telling us is that the parents are doing a great job keeping sick kids home and using the tools that NCIS, our No COVID in Schools team, have put out there to report any positive tests and get guidance on what should I do? What's the quarantine time? And everyone's willing to do whatever it takes to not impact so many other students. So that's been great to see. Here's the overall graph since we started August 25th. And what we can see is the ebb and flows of the bars on this bar graph of the cases and quarantines. And each spike is getting, that each travel is getting smaller and smaller and smaller, which is a great sign when you're looking at viral fitness because it's telling you a lot about your community, as far as the school community goes. So that's something we're very optimistic about. State data, we are seeing that quick plunge that Dr. Green, a couple of months ago, told us would happen. If you looked at South Africa and you looked at the UK models, so that's good to see in state. Rappahannock is seeing something similar, but that, their data is skewed on a seven day average per 100,000 because of our population. So that's why it's kind of coming down. But you are seeing the general, general overall curve of cases dropping. But it's important to remember, the RRHD, Rappahannock, Rappahannock Health District still remains in high community transmission at this point in time. But it is good to see the percent change going down of total new cases. So that's important too. Mitigations that we have in place right now, the health and safety policy of the school board is that universal masking. Unless parents have elected for their children not to be subject to this part of the policy. Cohorting recess is designated for certain homeroom classes. So we still cohort. Lunch is still isolated in classrooms except for small groups that get to use it on a rotating basis to keep members down. We still have pods in classrooms. Desk shields are in place. HVAC upgrades that have been made and maintained. UV decontamination and air scrubbing units are still there and continue to be maintained by Southern Air. Added layers of deep cleaning and disinfecting. And even terminal cleans, if we have any cases in our school that pop up, then there's an additional layer of cleaning that needs to take place. A daily health screening for staff. We have some new response mechanisms in place, which are really great. Contact tracing, in case tracking, data gathering. We have not given up on that at all because that really is telling us exactly how to respond very quickly. I know a lot of school districts across the state are now saying with BDH, yeah, they're, they're not really going to trace unless there's over 10% impact on your building. So they're not going to mess with you unless you operate to that extent. So we don't want to let it get that far at all. So we're maintaining that. And we've got one of the most comprehensive, thanks to our NCIS team, and Robert Murray and Lee Bernstein, for creating this amazing database that BDH has direct connection to. So they see it real time what we're seeing in our school. And there's wonderful data in there. It tracks all of the cases, all the close contacts, all the symptoms that people are experiencing, the timeframes, it's incredible. So they've done a lot of work. I mean, it tells us a lot of great data how to inform our response mechanisms and our... They can't hear me?
No, something's not on the screen there. I think it's.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm sorry about the sound, I just wanted to make sure we could hear. Right, so that data informs how we respond to COVID in the schools. KN95 masks are available for any staff or any students who wish to use them. We did place a large order and we do have them available. We now have free test kits, which did finally come in. So we have free test kits available for students and staff. But we do have to go through the school nurses who have criteria. You're not just giving them out for free. You have to have had possible exposure or symptomatic or one of those.
Kid has to come and be questioned. Is that right?
Not necessarily. No, they don't have to come in to be questioned. But if the parent reports that they may have been exposed, can I come get it? Then yes, we'll accommodate that, yeah. The Wellness Center is open. We started seeing patients this week very successfully. It's working very well. So we will have a flyer to go out for next week just to really advertise now that we worked out all the cases. And we have Heather Campbell on staff and she's fitting in so great. So mental health services are still available, outpatient, school-based onsite. The Fit Kids Clinic, the Valley Health Partnership, that will provide sick visits, point of care testing, diagnostics of illnesses like flu, strep, and COVID. Telehealth with a Valley Health provider onsite that's billable through insurance or Medicaid, just like a regular flyer visit. And they can treat, tell what the treatment is going to be and prescribe medicine. So the parent, all they have to do is pick up their child, do a prescription on the way home from work and they don't have to go all over the place trying to get to the doctor, pediatrician, and CVS and all of those things. So it's super convenient and very helpful, but it really does help.
Shannon, I just like to add, we had a rough start.
We did.
Right? But now, when Shannon says that Wellness Center is open, it's open full time. And we, it's our staff number.
Yes.
So fully staffed, full time, and a dependable arrangement, not like how we started. And so we have to make sure there was not a good first impression, I think, that we left with Wellness Center that people need to know it's not like it was as predictable and reliable. We need to make sure the parents know that it's different than what they first experienced.
Yeah, and those who experienced it when the person was here loved it. But it was just, I want people to also know that, you know, we broke that grant and that project before we knew what COVID was going to do.
Oh, right.
So really, it was nobody's fault. It just, it was either, it's the difference between patients being seen at the hospital and not.
It can be hard to get a best of first impression. I just want to make sure.
Absolutely.
There's a different shared.
And that's why we changed the agreement to say, okay, look, we do have a grant. We do have an agreement that we do expect to be followed. So allowing those grant plans to flow through our own payroll so it's a dedicated our CPS staff member in collaboration with Valley Health as the liaison, rather than a Valley Health employee who's a satellite here. And that model is already working out really well.
Can I just ask one question about on this slide, about the test kits again? So if there's a family who, like maybe a parent had an exposure at work, could they, through our Wellness Center, get a test or ask, request a test for the school?
For their students.
For the students.
For the students, for their children, they can. But they covers, but it may not necessarily cover parents in certain circumstances where it may affect. But they have to go through the school nurse. The Wellness Center itself has its own testing, point of care testing that they use through Valley Health, but that is only for children.
Just for children, okay.
Okay. So in talking with, and we had talked about this, too, the school board saw that we could probably start de-escalating some of our mitigation strategies as early as March. And talking to NCIS, they want to start just a little bit earlier on a couple. And this is why, this came directly from them today. Robert Murray's been analyzing the data and wanted to try removing the desk shields starting next week and de-cohorting recess. So recess is mainly outdoors and we see very, very little transmission at recess time. And kids are really needing to socialize with other students other than just their homeroom classes. And it's really starting to affect mental health of students. It also provides additional time for staff who will have to then monitor different groups and things. So their planning time in lunch periods will be affected that way too. But in looking at the data, NCIS feels very comfortable with those two starting next week. February 28th, they want to try putting lunches back in the cafeteria. And the reason it being, they want to try that for a few days. And then you have that first spring break to kind of see if anything occurs. We have very, very little cases affecting our schools right now, so data suggests that we could try. And if we have to regroup with spring break, we would be able to do that. And then after we return from spring break, they would feel comfortable removing masking requirements for students. I guess that's kind of similar to where we are with parents electing to do that at this point anyway. But then it would no longer be required universally if numbers maintain. And staff, due to the DOLI regulation, Section G, they can only remove masks if the community transmission is that lower moderate. So it wouldn't apply to staff. So this is what they recommend for starting to de-escalate, just little bits and pieces. But more on that in a minute. So recent court cases, implications on mitigations. We've been talking about the possibility that the courts, which we knew would happen because anytime there's a disagreement between different legislative branches, you're going to have some of that discourse going on and disagreements. So two major decisions happened this week. The Arlington case, which was Alexandria et al. versus Yonkin. And that was in Arlington Circuit Court. The plaintiffs argued that Executive Order II exceeded the governor's authority to use that authority to change mitigation plans in the school. The ruling was issued in favor of those seven plaintiff school divisions granting a temporary injunction on enforcement of Executive Order II on those seven school districts. So although I haven't seen any court order yet issued from the court and neither has our school board attorney, it's not a statewide injunction. It's on those seven who were plaintiffs to the lawsuit. But it gave, the ruling gives a. But it gave, the ruling gives a lot of great insights, which we'll talk about in a minute. The Chesapeake case, which was a group of parents who were arguing that EO2 is unconstitutional. The court did dismiss the case, concluding basically that the remedies sought by the petitioners were not available in the action. It was a technical ruling. But in their opinion, they did offer an opinion on Senate Bill 1303 to give further interpretation of that from the judiciary, which are interesting. In both cases aligns that that interpretation was helpful for school boards as they're looking at policy. So again, that section of Senate Bill 1303 that everybody is questioning all the time about, to the extent practicable, and what authority and whose authority can determine what those are. We've seen a flip-flop between the administration and the state between it's up to school boards to, no, I expect you to follow this legislation, to the T and follow CDC exactly as it states, and then back to sort of, no, school boards can decide. So judiciary insights into that interplay kind of tell us that both reiterate the authority to local school boards to determine which mitigation strategies are appropriate for each locality. So it doesn't necessarily mean it's a blanket universal for everybody. Both cases reinstated that school board's authority to determine which mitigations are practicable in their community. And that's really driven home of the Supreme Court decision this week with Chesapeake. By allowing the school boards to follow the CDC's recommended COVID-19 mitigation strategies to the maximum extent practicable, Senate Bill 1303 necessarily gives the boards a degree of discretion to modify or even forego these strategies as they deem appropriate for their individual circumstances. Because the school board has license to decide whether or when its power under Senate Bill 1303 should be exercised, the remedy sought by the petitioners does not lie to compel the school board's action under Senate Bill 1303, which is probably the best judiciary interpretation of Senate Bill 1303 we've had. As I was developing this slide, well, actually, it's already developed. So the Senate also just passed or put forward a table amendment just this afternoon that basically reiterates the governor's executive order that says parents are to choose whether or not to mask their children in schools. And the school cannot take any disciplinary action or academic consequences against any children whose parents elect to do that. And that just popped off the press this afternoon. So that's from the Senate. It's expected to go right to the GOP-led House. It's a four-minute pass. Yeah, it did. It just passed. So the Senate passed it. The House is expected to pass, the governor is expected to sign it. And that all can happen very quickly with something like that. So just something we had. So mask usage, this question came up. We were directed to go ahead and just make sure we had a stockpile of KN95 masks when the CDC changed, updated their guidance about the uses of masks and those that are most effective against Omicron. So we've spent about $4,000, $4,000 on masks for adults and youth. And so far, about 8% of staff have requested them, and 2.5% of students, parents have asked for them for students, but they are available should anybody wish to use them.
Parents have them.
Parents.
Parents have them.
Yes.
Is that on Facebook or message?
We've put it out on our last communication, too, and an email to parents as well. So really, it comes back to school board decision. There's nothing right now that's happened legally to compel the school board to change anything at this point. But as a school board, everything points to, you have the authority to do pretty much whatever you want to do with your policies about health and safety. You just can't impact anything that's the federal rules, like the bus order for masking on buses, and right now, the DOLI, that's a focus staff at this point. So that is the wellness. Do we have any questions, please?
So I'm just going back to those KN95 masks, since, as you know, I believe that it's a good idea for anybody who wants to wear masks to have the best mask available. What could we do to make them more available, rather than just a notice? Is there some, in some way, that we could have them in classrooms? You know, something where students could swap out their cloth mask, swap masks more easily with them? You know, just that might, that might... Especially people, I'm thinking of, I mean, I just had a visitor today whose grandparent just died of COVID. That is a concern. When you think about who you're, who you're in contact with, and with kids, I think it can be hard. Having known through the pandemic for as long as we have, people will just say, oh, I always wore this mask, and this is what's gotten me through. And now that we have better, different items readily available, KN95s, maybe we could step up for those that are choosing to mask. Sure. Step up that, just saying, here, you should really wear this mask if you want to wear the mask in order to protect your...
And those are the masks that, when NCIS deals with exposure, they do say, you know, for day six or 10, this is the type of mask you should wear.
Yeah, so maybe just like hand it, you know, having it right there, rather than that issue of stuff. Except if there's way, I know that tends to be asked.
Yeah, we can put out another, just for parents to know that they are available, readily available students to know about.
Is that a likely question?
Are they, are they in the office? Somebody comes in, you know?
They go through the nurse.
Somebody checks in. Maybe they don't need to go straight through the gym. I'm just, maybe they can be more...
Whatever's more accessible, we have that. I would love them to use a...
Yeah, that would be too bad.
Sure.
Not wearing.
No, we have them. So whatever communications, I'll talk to Holly a little bit more about, and NCIS team for making them available. I just wouldn't want them wasted.
You don't want them wasted. Yeah.
So, yeah, absolutely.
But just reading up the order, oh, it's a new mask, here's an upgrade for you.
Yeah.
Because if the parent was aware that the child had KN95 masks.
Yes, they should be aware.
They should be aware that that's what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I have all the respect in the world for the NCIS team. I think they, the long, I'm a little bit concerned with everything we have in our region is right. The whole world is right. And I would, it would probably make better sense to me to move the de-escalation plan out just to give it another week to see where we are with kids at school. It's 10 something days. Maybe, maybe keep, keep cohort recesses, but I don't think I'd move it. I don't see any reason to move the changes.
That's a student request. I mean, they can't, they don't have a lot of room on the desks, and they're getting... So that was a student, yeah, the students are requesting that every time they see them in the halls, too.
And then the part over here, it says staff is lower moderate. If it goes to, if the red goes to yellow, then staff will be able to remove masks.
According to DOLI, yes.
I mean...
DOLI regulations, yes. They're into that, yeah.
And remove, we don't have a mask requirement right now. So we're not really removing the masks.
Well, it's in the policy that we do expect universal masking, like for now, all of your visitors, spectators, everybody's...
Well, I would, okay, I would achieve that, but that's...
I think, well, I would tend to say, if they've looked at all the veterans and these other recommendations, I would favor staying on this de-escalation plan, that they've already got scheduled.
Which, what we're gonna, in the past, we've had...
Well, it's not really scheduled, this just...
This question's got time, it's got time and the seas, and actually...
We have to approve it before, so...
Well, there's no motion to approve it. I'm just saying, if, if, if they created a plan, it seems reasonable to me. That's all I'm...
In the past, when we've adjusted, I'm thinking about last year now, we based it on some kind of number, like some kind of, some kind of measurable, oh, well, we didn't really screw something up. But doing this, like de-escalating, I would think that we should have some kind of criteria. We shouldn't just plow through the list because it's February 14th, but then we should say...
We do. So 1% threshold is what we kind of look at. BDH is only at 10. Like I said, we're looking at...
I think that same threshold is, for such a small school, is appropriate to me, like 1%.
1% is like where we're comfortable. So if we saw a quick 1% spike after just doing the February 14th, we wouldn't do any more. You know, so it has to be step by step, and watching the cases very closely and the exposures that may occur. So you would only go to step two on February 28th if it maintains stable under that 1%. So would it move to the next one?
And if it escalates after removing mitigation, would we then un, add on later?
Yes, they'd go back. Yes, exactly. That's the idea.
I think that that makes sense.
Of course.
To have work forward and to depend on that area.
Absolutely, yes.
I think as long as we have, and we started out with some real good mitigation formulas that we're going to deal with, as long as we stay with those, I think we're good.
Yes, and now we have so many more response measures we're using with the testing and the Wellness Center and the KN95 masks that are available, and all these different pieces that I think let, help lend NCIS to their ability to respond very quickly. But yes, that's the idea of the stair steps. You can always step back and watch it very closely if that's what those dates are for. And then you have that spring break time, too. You'll really see, give it a little period of time. But it was interesting what we expected, and you can see it on the big graph with our school community. And looking at the data to the amount of exposure and cases that we've had, it looks pretty promising with creating some type of pro-clivity in our school community as far as the high numbers of vaccination and the case numbers we had. So hopefully, we're getting there.
Right, anything else?
I just, one more question that you just brought up, vaccination. And I, I think that we do still have some kids who could get vaccinated, who might, as our new governor is really promoting that, might be more open to vaccination. I don't know if we could, if we've been able to, I know we coach in clinics here that have been versed in attendance. Any way we can push out information or offer a clinic? Especially, I think, the under-five population is going to be improved for those.
Under-five?
I think that that's coming up.
I haven't seen it wholly approved yet.
It's not wholly approved, it's coming, coming down the block.
We, we never offered, we offered the facility so that BDH could do it and told people BDH is going to be here on this day. That's our role.
Right.
To have it here, rather than going back and re-burden. Yeah, no, it'd be there. Does that sound familiar?
Yeah, we're in constant contact with, like Sean Holster, usually manages a lot of that clinic requests and BDH as well. So as those requests come up, like our last one, the five-and-over clinic we held was also in conjunction with Versus Sponder, Pusters. So that was kind of a conjunction between them. So that, that was helpful. So we'll, we'll monitor the need and the requesting. It was versed in attended. We had, I think, 57 requests for that vaccination clinic, and we had about 13. So, but they are very readily available everywhere now, so that's, that's...
Right. Anything else, like to Dr. Ripley?
Yeah, well...
You know, in the past, we've done this BSB, an honor roll to both of us. Right? And it's, it's a great idea. But I don't have any ideas. If anybody has any ideas, it's sweet.
We were still watching, that was my idea.
We did, it's a great idea. And, and, and so, so I'm wondering if we have any ideas.
One hope, we're just, we thought that we did something else.
Did the bane?
The bane, book review, book review was a great choice.
You know, someone is going to give us...
Wow. And so, it's not a bad idea. And typically, we give it for past performance, right? Not for future problems. So, but we have this month to figure it out.
Yes.
And if you have an idea and you can float it, we will start forming something. So we're prepared at the next meeting.
Well, I would love to, well, they picked up a nominal length for the school.
But that's, I can... It's a great, it's a great idea.
We haven't done that. That's not, that's not part of the road, Adam.
We did. I think it's been a while. It's been a while.
We did.
We did a long time ago, I think.
So if nothing else, if nothing else comes up, if something does come up, just make sure that it's been noticed. And we'll try to formulate something for next month.
Yeah, because I'll have to, we'll have to do the resolution of that.
Yes, definitely. All right, thanks. Headwaters represent.
I have a report. Yes, I did speak, I mean, the person with Miss Wire, with my headwaters, this is the report. There are 66 students in the winter session of after-school. The classes they're offering are cooking, Lego robotics, taught by my own son, who I taught in math. So it's very exciting. I'm very proud of, as a school board member, I'm proud of having a son who's a teacher already. And yeah, that's a moment. Right. And, and the program is still operating with masks mandatory for all, at the request of staff. They're worried about losing a very, some, a few small staff members at that, and that hasn't been a problem. Tomorrow, the headwaters' after-school staff will be trained in youth mental health first aid at the headwaters' office. Student enrichment grants, there have been about $1,000 given for help with costs for the new skiing and snowboarding club that I think went once, I don't know if they went twice. Yeah, it's an exciting new thing, and they were ready to support it. Scholarship applications are open now, and the deadline for applying is February 27th. And Miss Wire spoke to high school seniors to encourage them to apply and give them tips on how to write successful essays for their applications. And headwaters have been helping with dual enrollment costs, including tuition for a student taking a plumbing certification towards, for a perfectly made college. The scholarship, there are scholarships for the high school plus program that are open for people who graduated five years or less. But that's just something we want to promote, and it's exciting that even after you finish their rep and accounting public school, you can get another training. And that's, that's ongoing as well. Summer forest is, is registering, registered now as well. It's going to take place in the high school auditorium from June 20th to July 1st this year. And register on their website. Headwaters also spent $3,500 on materials for the farm-to-table program this month. And the farm-to-table program is going to participate in the 21st annual Rattan and Rappin' sale at Rattan Farm, which will be held on May 7th this year.
Can you be, Jeff?
I don't know, we did not be, we will be meeting this, this Thursday.
Is anyone who would like to address the board this evening? Or you're worn out? Anyone? Is anyone who would like to address the board regarding the budget this evening?
I think mine as well. Hi, I'm Rosalina, we're the St. Paul industry. And I just really was excited to see that we can still find escalating. I'm in favor of the de-escalation. And I really do like the timeline we had, because we are going to have breaks at school. And I think that their dates, the NCIS, would work really well. And I certainly don't want to go backwards with the mask. And so I really couldn't hear really well tonight, but that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thanks. We're going to need to have a sign, like, you know, something that, when you're not able to hear what's happening upstairs, that you say something, give us a sign or something like this is the universal. I can't hear you tonight.
I assume you're going to go back to the high school. Tonight was a one-off.
We're going to be here for the next two months.
Well, then you...
March and April.
You really couldn't hear it all tonight.
The next two months.
Well, there is, I talked to Karen. There's a way to, well, corded mic on that, plug it into that.
There's that one, but they couldn't hear a lot.
We couldn't hear anybody behind the tape.
You can't hear this right now?
You can lean up and speak right into it?
Well, I think people need to, don't have to do that. But that's, if you get into the microphone, you can hear me, right?
I can, with all due respect, maybe the means, it needs to be training for the people behind the tape.
Well, and that's exactly what I mean. Because I can tell you this, all of us, we have little micro, we have speakers that are pointing right back at us.
You can feel loud.
We think we can be heard, but...
It seems like there was no amplification tonight. So I'm not sure... So I'm not sure what happened between where you are and the speakers, but we heard very little tonight. And you strain.
The fan.
Noise deal with, that's, we have to have it. But for whatever reason, tonight was the worst.
It was, yeah. Dr. Rob Holt is going to be so frustrated. She's spent so much time here with Gary and the custodians hooking it into the speaker. So I've really.
Something, something is quite same.
I don't, I don't.
We will promise, we will promise to solve this problem.
Yes.
This is not a hard problem. It should not be a hard problem. It's any consolation. It used to be worse. Anyway, that's true. So that's not much of a consolation.
Just regarding this setup, though, I feel like if we're closer to one another, we can see each other better.
Yeah.
Do that again.
And like I said, we are going to be here the next two months of the program in this room. All right. Is there any other public comment? I'm going to include that as public comment.
Yes.
General comment? Thanks. And don't forget to use the sign in the future. It'll tell me to tell somebody else to speak up, right? This is our sign, right? All right, thanks. Moving on to, are we done?
Anyone on Zoom?
Oh, anybody on Zoom? Thanks.
Everybody on Zoom, wish to address the board? No, sir.
All right, moving on to actual items. Very first one, is there a motion to approve Calendar A as was presented this evening? So we have motion, Mr. Uplands, or second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Byen, I'm all, any comment?
We just need to remember to add the text that you brought.
I'm sure she will. All in favor, I? All right, I, no. Is there a motion to approve the Madison agreement as was presented this evening? Good. Motion, Mr. Groves, or second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Meyer, any comment?
I have another count next to me. Yeah. I like the, wow.
All in favor, I? I, no, no. Just wanted any new business? I have what they, we, our, our retreat date from last month got canceled because of the weather. We've established a new date. It's March the 5th from 9:00 to noon. We are paying for a facilitator with grant funding. And our topic is still the comprehensive plan. And so that will be March the 5th. The next room is good, we're meeting.
I just had one question. I did receive some comments and questions regarding what happened on Wednesday at the high school with lockdown and things like that. I don't know if that can be clarified by Dr. Ripley, what's, what's going out.
What's now going on?
Forward, what's going forward, what we're doing?
Absolutely. And actually, Mr. Stewart, do you mind coming to the podium? We have been meeting regularly with the sheriff's office and our mental health team in figures to make sure that we have all the supports in place to handle the feelings of all of our students and staff. So would you like to address that?
Yes, ma'am. Good afternoon, everyone.
You may have to hold it, speak right into it.
Good evening, Board, and, and Chairman. We had an incident last Wednesday. One of the things.
I don't think it's gone.
That's good.
Yeah, it's good. Yeah, yeah.
One of the things that I've requested of the superintendent and head of support of central office staff is making sure that we support our kids in every way possible. Tomorrow, we are hosting a student emergency management debriefing called Helping Friends. It's an opportunity for students at the high school to be able to access some resources, phone numbers, information, so that they can be prepared to help themselves or their friends. Students will also have an opportunity to ask questions about the events that happened at our high school last Wednesday and process that with a number of agencies that we're working with. Allen Westus, the Rappahannock Rappahannock Community Services Board, Renee, Renee.
Jordan.
Thank you. Renee Jordan, I guess I'm with her, too. With the Mental Health Association of Volker County will be joining us along with our old professional school counselor, Daisy Pond. Our sheriff, Compton, will be there. I'll be there, of course, and our school resource officer. Tell the students, work with that process, understand the events of last Wednesday.
Thank you for organizing that. Really appreciate it.
It was definitely a team effort and the superintendent and I believe that, you know, as adults, we debriefed about it. So we want to give our kids the same opportunity.
You'll be able to do that in small groups?
We'll be able to do that in a small, tomorrow morning, sorry, we take place around reaching seminar and students receive an email. I can make sure that our clerk gets a copy that we're going to give to you. We communicate with families. We communicate with the students. We communicated with our teachers about the Helping Friends seminar that we're having tomorrow.
Great. Could you all hear Principal Stewart? Good, because you didn't give me the sign. If you did. Go to town. Go to town, fine. Good job. I'm sorry, is there any other new business stuff? I think I jumped in. Is there any other new business? All right, thank you. Our next school board meeting is March the 8th, back in the same location at 6:00 C M. And are we ready for a motion to go into closed session?
I'm sorry.
Yep.
You just, it's our public hearing, isn't it?
It is. Officially? It is. Officially, it is officially our public hearing in the budget. Now, technically, just so you know, every meeting we have is a public hearing. So I just said, for example, there's a motion, there's a public comment on the budget in our agenda for tonight.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, just so you know, nothing special, but again, another opportunity. And, but we have to officially call upon a public hearing on the budget officially. So that's next one. All right, hopefully, we'll have more data about it. So.
Right. I'm moving forward to being closed session on purpose to discuss the steward appointment of staff from best practice position, coaching positions, resignation, professional position pursuant to Virginia Code, section 2.2, section 3711, day one.
Your vote, Mr. Grove, is their section, so, section Ms. Root, and all in favor, I? I, no. We're going to be in closed session and be back here in.
Four minutes.
Four minutes. We'll be short and we'll return in five. And C three and.